All right. Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the February 9th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for a Pledge of Allegiance in the moment of silence? Do any members have any conflicts of interest or disqualifications with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. We have a quorum with five people. Are there any change? Yeah, I forgot about the election of officers. Need to add that in there. So at this time, we will select officers. How do you want to handle that? You just want me to ask for a motion?
Still with the motion.
Okay. Does anybody want to open the floor for a motion for Chairman and Vice Chairman?
I motion for you to be Chairman and Gary Owens, Vice Chairman.
I second it.
One at a time. We need to do one at a time.
Oh, sorry.
So just Chairman.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we'll open the floor for Vice Chairman.
Okay. I make a motion for Gary to be the Vice Chair.
All right. We have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, we don't have to shuffle seats, so we'll keep on going. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Just, we had talked about this in the work session. We just need to change, I think, new business B, I think needs to be 18-23.
I think so. Item number two was also...
The FOST.
Yeah.
This is listed as 21-04, but to be consistent, all the data within our packet notes 18-23.
All right.
And that's in the form of a motion.
With that, we have a motion to make those changes and approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's approved. All right. Is there any changes to the January 12th, 2021 meeting minutes? Hearing none. Entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes are approved. No old business. Moving on to the first item. Agenda item PB 21-04 Flora Farm. Conditionally rezone 202.44 acres from AG to conditional MXR to allow subdivision with 277 single-family dwelling lots, 7,500 square-foot neighborhood commercial units, and associated amenities. And, Ms. Sisera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like you said, the request before you tonight is to conditionally rezone 202.44 acres from agriculture AG to a conditional MXR, a mixed residential. The property is what was before you a few months ago, or earlier last year, as the Flora Farm Plan Development Residential. That was not approved at the Board of Commissioner level, and they are now coming back through with a conditional MXR. The property is located next to the FOST development and next to the Moyacay Middle School and Eagle Creek. It is currently zoned ag, and you can see the surrounding properties. You have the PDR of the FOST development, the ag zoning of Eagle Creek, the GB along Survey Road, and the single-family residential of ranch land. It is located in the full-service area of the 2006 Land Use Plan. And it is split in the Moyacay Small Area Plan. The front part of it, of these properties, are in full service, and probably the back, two-thirds of these properties are in the limited service of the Moyacay Small Area Plan. So, this is the proposal that the applicant has put forth. It is 277 single-family dwellings. And up front, they're going to have approximately 7,500 square feet of commercial. There's approximately 83 of the 202 acres are proposed to be in open space, and residential amenities include a dog park, picnic area, pool, clubhouse, and sidewalks. So, whoops. And here is the limited commercial area that the project is proposing. So... And these are the phasing, the phasing of the project that the applicant is proposing, and that's going to be part of their, some of their conditions. So, 277 single-family dwelling lots with limited neighborhood commercial there in the front along Survey Road, approximately 83 acres that are going to be held in open space. You see the residential amenities that we've already gone over. Non-residential amenities for the commercial area will include outdoor dining area and patio with benches. Non-residential, I mean, sorry, the applicant is also proposing to install an eight-foot multi-use path along Carrottoke Highway as required by the Currituck Transportation Plan. The three non-residential buildings, the commercial area up front there, will be required to meet non-residential design standards. And there will be a requirement if the three non-residential buildings combined exceed 5,000 square feet, and there are more, four or more tenant spaces, this will be treated like a shopping center, and those design criteria will have to be met. So, in a conditional rezoning, the applicant and the county can come to some mutually-understood conditions that are going to be on the property, and the applicant is requesting these conditions are going to be placed, proposing these conditions to be placed on this project with the CMXR. These are the drainage improvements that the applicant is proposing: to extend Roland Creek Drainage to the Eagle Creek Pump Station with an agreement from Eagle Creek; to make improvements to the drainage ditch that runs along the common boundary between the FOST and Brumsey property and Eagle Creek Ranch Land based on results from the stormwater modeling and existing conditions; perform stormwater modeling in the proposed Flora Farm Development to manage the 100-year storm to provide the adequate storage. And the condition number two that they are proposing to regard as phasing, the development will be recorded in five phases, and these would be conditions for this rezoning. The developer will not record the first phase before June 1st, 2022. The first phase will not contain more than 55 lots. Subsequent phases will not be recorded sooner than six months following the prior phase, and in any event, no sooner than January 1st, 2023. The developer retained the right to provide an annual update of phasing, including making adjustments to phase lines and the sequence of recording, as long as the timing, total lots recorded in the above conditions is followed. So, in making a zoning map decision, these are the standards that the board may weigh when considering a change to the zoning map, and this would be a rezoning. It's conditional, but it is still a rezoning, so these following standards you may still consider. Is it consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Land Use Plan and other applicable adopted county plans? Is in any conflict with any ordinance, provision of the ordinance, is required by changed conditions? It addresses a demonstrated community need, is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the land, subject to the application; adverse impacts nearby lands would result in logical and orderly development pattern, would result in significant adverse impacts on the natural environment, including but not limited to water, air, noise, stormwater management, wildlife vegetations, wetlands, and natural functioning of the environment; would result in development that is adequately served by public facilities, streets, potable water, sewage, stormwater management, solid waste collection, and disposable schools, parks, police, fire, and emergency medical facilities. It would not result in significantly adverse impacts on the land values in the surrounding areas, and would not conflict with public interests and in harmony with the purposes and the intent of this ordinance. So, the land use, well, this development is, does have some consistent policies, is consistent with some of the policies of the Land Use Plan, and I think the applicant did provide a list of those Land Use Plan policies that they feel that this is consistent with. And there's also, but there's some, staff feels that there's some inconsistencies as well, some of which are Policy TR-2. So this request is a lot less lots than the previously PDR that was denied. There's some of the same traffic concerns are still there. Just the lower level of service on Carrottoke Highway during peak times. One of the reasons the PDR request was not approved was traffic concerns based on the TIA submitted at that time, and that TIA, so they have submitted the same TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, that was submitted with the larger Flora Farm PDR. Policies SF-4 and PP-2 are back to those same concerns about traffic and the TIA. It also is consistent with some of the policies of the Moyacay Small Area Plan, and once again, you can refer to the applicant on that. There are, we think there are some inconsistencies with some other policies. One of the reasons, we're back to the traffic and TR-1 in the Moyacay Small Area Plan, we can go over that, they're in your staff report. They address traffic. And then, you know, in the Moyacay Small Area Plan, this is split by full service and limited service. In that area, 129 lots are proposed, sorry, 129 lots would be what would be allowed with the limited service designation of 1.5 units per acre. And 175 lots are proposed in that limited area, the Moyacay Small Area Plan. However, the 2006 Land Use Plan has designated that entire area as full service. So, the Board of Commissioners in their decision with FOST did place more emphasis on the 2006 Land Use Plan designation. So, as it sits today, and you can see in your staff report, and we briefly went over in the work session, currently Moyacay Elementary School is over capacity. This development will generate 659 elementary school. Where did we put that? We did not put that. But in your, in your staff report, let me find that page. Packet page 25, in your packet, you can see how the Moyacay and Shawboro School District bisects this project area. So some of these kids that are going to be generated or be going to, designated to go to Moyacay, and some are going to be designated to go to Shawboro. So as it sits today, Moyacay Elementary School does not have capacity for the children that will be generated by this development. And in the zoning amendment standards, zoning map amendment standards that I went over, it says that it would not generate, what the board may consider is that it does not generate, sorry, it does not create an instance that where there, a development that is not adequately, that is not adequately served by public utilities, public facilities, and as it sits today, there would not be school space. However, the Currituck County and the Board of Education are moving forward with a school expansion, which would begin to increase the school capacity at Moyacay Elementary School to about 750 students. The county manager is here tonight to address that and the timeline for that, for that expansion to begin, for the expansion to hopefully be completed, and for have that additional space. His notes from his memo, the email, which you have the email there, but that email, notes from that were put into the staff report, and some of the concerns over the school, the school numbers. So, although this plan is a lot different than the PDR as far as lowering of the commercial area and less number of lots, no multifamily is represented on this current one, staff does concern. We do have concerns about this project. It is inconsistent with some Land Use Plan policies. It is inconsistent with the Moyacay Small Area Plan. Overall density allowed in the limited service area in Moyacay, that's a concern. The fact that as we sit today, there are not adequate public facilities to serve this, to serve this development. Traffic on Survey Road and Carrottoke Highway intersections is still a concern. We're still going to be adding 277 single-family homes to this area. The soils are a concern in here. This project will be served, will be connecting to off-site wastewater treatment plant. They will be served by Currituck Water. They'll have public water, but they will be connecting to off-site wastewater treatment plant at Eagle Creek. And there is some concern over the capacity to handle that, and that may be something that the applicant can address when they go over there. So, like I said, as it sits today, there is not adequate public facilities in Moyacay Elementary School to serve, to serve this development. These are the number of students that it will be, that this development will be generating. Be 69 students, elementary school students, 22 middle school students, and 38 high school students. So, because of this, I mean, we, and according to the inconsistencies with this Moyacay Small Area Plan, and then the traffic analysis, TRC is recommending, is not recommending approval of this project. So, the conditional zoning request is not consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan. The proposed use identified as requested is a residential subdivision. The request is located in the Moyacay Elementary School District, and the Moyacay Elementary School ADM for August exceeds the actual capacity of the school, adopted by the number, the number capacities that are adopted by the Currituck County Board of Education. It increases the projected number of students in Moyacay Elementary School by approximately 43 students, based on the Tischler study. Exceeds the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Proposal exceeds the number of lots allowed by the Moyacay Small Area Plan in the limited service area. There is concern over adequate wastewater being able to be provided at this time, and then the concerns for traffic over Carrottoke Highway. However, while the Technical Review Committee is recommending denial of this project, but should the board find that it is compliant and wants to approve this project, these are the following conditions that we recommend: that the application for the preliminary plant use permit for this subdivision would not be submitted until the notice to proceed for the school expansion is fully executed. It is estimated for that to happen on June 1st of this year, as you can see from that email from the county manager; that the conditions of approval proposed by the applicant are incorporated into the approval; that the model home sample elevation is being incorporated into the approval; that the December 16th, 2020 memorandum is, from the TIA, is reviewed and approved by DOT; and that certification be provided that the wastewater treatment plant can accommodate the amount of wastewater that will be generated by this, this request. So I just gave you guys a lot of information. What questions do you, would you have for me at this point?
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Sisera?
My concern is drainage. And the, the whole area is a hole in the drainage sheet cleared out, and as these ditches get clear, it gets more way for more capacity. HATC is giving us a number with the highway, and I know that the, I know that that's not the engineer of county, but the highway, the drainage or the culverts that run under 168, what are their capacity, and what is all this extra drainage for those culverts under the highway? And then as that goes on to the other side, what is the, what is the protection that that stays clean and clear for, you know, forever, really? I mean, what is that capacity under, for those culverts? What are the cleaning of the ditches and adding more ditches and bringing more water through there? Have we heard from DOT and what those culverts can handle, or will we just be back up there until it drains through to the other side of the highway?
So, in the FOST rezoning, the developer, the applicant did, and that's on packet page 76, and you can see the drainage conditions that were part of that FOST rezoning. And it addresses some clearing and snagging further to the east. You can see it says section, I can't read that, 4.11 maybe, 1J?
H1.
H1.
I think so.
Clear and snag Roland Creek from Highway 168 to the east end of Roland Creek Estates, subject to obtaining right of entry from downstream property owners. And then up at the top, improved survey road ditch from Guinea Road to Railroad. So some of these would address, you know, downstream issues if the applicant has been able to obtain right of entry on these things. As far as the culvert capacity, I know that was something that came up with NC DOT in discussions early on with FOST, and that may be something that the applicant can answer, but have they given us specific capacities for those culverts? No, they have not. So with FOST, there would be some downstream clearing and snagging of some of the ditches, and which would make positive improvements here with Flora as well.
I have one question, and it might have been the screen prior to this, about the number of lots. It exceeded the number of lots in the Moyacay Small...
Area Plan.
Area Plan, yeah.
Okay.
That this develop, do you know how much over it is?
Well, when Tammy did the math on this, there are 120 not, lots that would be allowed if you're going straight from the line that designates the full service and the limited service. That area would be 129 lots would be allowed in the limited service of the Moyacay Small Area Plan, and they are proposing 175.
Okay.
But this entire property in the Moyacay, sorry, in the 2006 Land Use Plan, that entire property, all these entire three properties are zoned, designated as full service, so then that, that full service could be used to then guide the density.
And that's from the Land Use Plan?
That's from the Land Use Plan.
Okay.
And that was with the approval of FOST, the Board of Commissioners opted to give more weight to the 2006 Land Use Plan designation.
Looking, looking at the question of the adequate facilities for the school situation, Moyacay School, I believe it was showing that there'd be 43 students generated for the Moyacay School as a result of what's proposed, and they were using that 2004 study. Has there been any follow-up on that study insofar as, is it accurate? I mean, it's, what, 17 years old now? Has that, has that student generation rate been seen to be accurate over this timeframe?
It does. We, using transportation data and getting school, what we call getting transportation data from the schools, where we know where, we don't know the individual students, but we know where they are and what school they're going to. And then we take that information and we, what we call, we reverse-engineer that to make sure that we are still, that that is still a good multiplier that we're using. Like you said, it's from the 2004, and we did it last year. We have not done it this year. Sometimes that is, we do it in conjunction with information presented at the Commissioners' Retreat. That information was not requested this year, but we did it last year, and it's still, it's creeping up, and, but we're still within, I think it was like .49, and it's like .48 was what the Tischler Study represented, and I think we're seeing .49 students generated. And I think we're seeing point four-nine students generated, so we're still.
They're still following along fairly accurately.
Still, still close enough for our purposes. And these are, these, these numbers are for, for planning purposes.
Right.
For, for forecasting, you know, how many kids are going to be coming in? And when do you need to start phasing projects? When do you need to start looking for property, maybe going out for expansions? So there are, there's a planning number and not a, that is not as hard capacity number.
Sure, sure. But, but, but the study is fairly accurate.
It's fairly accurate still, even now.
That's good, okay.
That's good. That's one less study we're gonna have to immediately address, right now.
But it has proven to be fairly accurate.
It has proven to be fairly accurate, yes.
One of the things you addressed earlier was the first phase of the project would be completed in, my impression is completed in June of twenty-twenty-two. Is that when there's actually houses finished and people are living there?
That would be when the developer not record the first phase. Sorry, I want to see you.
Yeah.
That would be when the final plat would be coming in. That means all the infrastructure is put in, it's been certified, and the plat is then ready to be recorded and the actual lots created. That, then from there, then the building of the house would commence. Anywhere probably from, you know, three to six months typically is what we're seeing in some of these. So, and that would be something maybe you could ask the applicant, what kind of timeframe they think, building of the houses. But I would say at least three months after June first of twenty-twenty-two would be when the houses would typically come on in, in such, such a development, as we've seen with some other ones.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
And if you all would like to, the county manager is here at, at our request in case you all wanted to have him go over his anticipation schedule and for the Moyack expansion. I don't know if you, we're gonna call him up at a later date, but if you're asking staff questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stikeleather? You want to talk to him now?
It's an, now, the, just, it's an expansion of the school that's already there.
Come on up.
Yes, sir. Yes, the, the plan is actually a twofold plan. We're gonna expand Moyack Middle School and Moyack Elementary School. The elementary school will be an expansion and also an expansion of the core capacities. So cafeteria, dining area, as well as some other general renovations that are needed. Through extensive conversations with the superintendent, we, we both agree that we can get that school somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred and fifty students, capacity-wise. That's more on his side. My side's more on the construction timing. So notice to proceed is gonna be June first. However, the way that the process works, we've selected a design build team, which is an architect and a contractor. That process is already completed, we've graded those, we've made an initial selection, we'll begin to negotiate. So really, the, the June first is essentially a contract is signed. In a lot of these situations, the designer will actually begin work. In most cases, you don't not sign the contract once you've gone through this process. So the designer will probably begin what they call pre-design work, you know, in the next couple of months, I would think. And so I've got some comfort level with the timeline being that there will be capacity in August of twenty-twenty-three for a couple of reasons. One, we've got quite a bit of time between here and that date. But more importantly, this project is phased. So even if the core capacities weren't ready by August of twenty-twenty-three, the classroom space will be the priorities at Moyack Elementary School. So we're doing the middle school as well, because we see that there's gonna be a need for that in the next, you know, three to four years. Trying to get ahead of ourselves a little bit, be proactive. But as we have that discussion with the contractor, our emphasis will be on the expansion of the classroom space at Moyack Elementary School.
These classrooms, are they portable classrooms or are they gonna be brick, brick, brick building?
So they, they already have mobile classrooms out there. These are gonna be actually constructed brick classrooms. And it'll be, if you're familiar with Moyack Elementary, I guess the, I'm gonna get this wrong. The library, the newer addition that is the library, it'll come off of the back of that and into the, the back somewhere. We don't know exactly. But, and it'll be somewhere between five and seven new classrooms. And so we're gonna let the design team really dictate how it lays out. For us, it's conceptual. We found a, a study from two thousand and eleven that actually made recommendations on expand, potential expansions to several of our schools about a, not quite a year ago. And both of the boards agreed, I want to say at the end of last year, at the end of the fall, to move forward with those two projects from that study.
Hopefully that'll replace the trailers.
It will. And then, you know, so tentatively, our goal is to, to do that and then also to, to find space and construct a, a new elementary school somewhere in the Moyack area. So we are actively planning for that in our capital improvement plan, which is something that I presented to the Board of Commissioners. So, like I said, I have, I have, and the superintendent also, he was gonna be here tonight, he had a conflict, have a lot of confidence in the fact that we have a good plan in place to meet adequate public facilities for schools.
So, the, the adequate public facilities in this case, where there, when there's, where there's not enough classroom capacity, is it only Moyack Elementary that's causing the problem?
Right now it is.
So that's really where?
Yeah, so, yeah, so Moyack Elementary is over the actual capacity from what the school system has determined. That is a number that they voted on last year sometime. And so the way that, and I'm gonna get kinda outside of what you all normally operate in. The way the use permit works is there's language that says a use permit should not be approved unless adequate facilities are planned within two years, which is what Laurie was addressing, saying that in this case, they're not there today. So if this was a use permit, you can look forward two years. I mean, it's really, you all are the board that's gonna make the recommendations. So y'all have to kinda weigh and see whether you're willing to accept a plan that's in place within a two-year, roughly two-year timeframe is acceptable. Because I have the utmost confidence that we'll have classroom space by August of twenty-twenty-three.
What about the high school? How's the high school? I see that they, it's like between JP and Carrituck High, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, eighty-six percent.
So, the, the high school is an interesting animal, because there's a lot more flexibility internally in the way the school operates. And I'm not gonna be able to get into that, because I'm not the superintendent. But my understanding is they can structure a high school day, meaning, the way that I understand it, right now, teachers have a free period that is spent inside of a class. If you rotate that teacher out of that class and then put an actual class in that room during that time, you've increased the capacity of the high school just by more efficient use of the space. The high school was designed with expansion capabilities, so that's an option that's available. We are further away from a high school than a middle and an elementary school. So right now, our focus is on those. However, the school system is going to be performing another capital plan, similar to what was done in two thousand and eleven. That one actually expired this year, and so I'm sure it'll make recommendations on, you know, potential high school solutions. So, the, the one thing I will say as your county manager is, high schools are terribly expensive to build, brand-new. Eighty to ninety million dollars. And, yeah, that's a big number. So I'm gonna try to avoid a brand-new high school if I can, just because it'll be a, a real tax burden.
This is way out, probably out of your area of expertise, but COVID has created such a different dynamic with the schools and capacity, because it looks like maybe half or less than half are choosing to keep their, their children at home.
So, actually, myself and the superintendent had a conversation around this as we're trying to figure out what our comfort level was. It's kinda making a statement that we thought adequate public facilities would be available in August of twenty-twenty-three. And, and it's hard to quantify, but he's pretty sharp. His estimate is that there's somewhere like at Moyack Elementary, somewhere around forty-five kids that might not be there, either because they're doing virtual school or he's seeing lower kindergarten classes throughout the district. So parents who maybe had a kid that was gonna be a younger kindergartner have actually maybe waited a year to put their kid in kindergarten. And so we took that into account when we were figuring out the adequate public facilities and seeing those folks come in, as well as what the new developments would generate. We still have a comfort level that, that those facilities will be adequate when we hit August of twenty-twenty-three.
How, what is the expansion of the Moyack Elementary in raw numbers? It's gonna go from, I know it's gonna go to seven fifty, but where's it starting at?
It, it, it's starting at five sixty?
Five sixty?
Five sixty today. There's classroom size legislation that'll go into effect next year that'll shift that number. But, once again, every superintendent, and I'm speaking a little bit for him, and I probably shouldn't, every superintendent's gonna operate a school a little differently, so.
Approximately two hundred more.
Yeah, around that number.
Around two hundred. And the ratio that we use for elementary schools? Because we talked about a ratio for just all schools. For elementary schools, it is, is it point two-four, point two-five?
It is, it's about a quarter.
Okay, okay, so.
Don't ask me the middle and high school, I can't remember.
No, I, 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 because we're, I just want to make sure we're talking about the elementary school, because that seems to be where the issue is.
Yeah.
Are the modular trailers being used currently right now?
There are two, we'll probably add two more at Moyack, just in, just in case, you know, we. Those two that are there are actively being used. So, and then the plan is, once the expansion's done, you should have plenty of space to take those and relocate them. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we, you guys don't need to hear this, you hear it all the time. But we have a lot of growth. With that comes challenges, but growth, challenges are a lot better than a community that's dying. And so it's, it's, it's difficult and it's stressful, especially for the staff and I'm sure even for the folks trying to do the developing. But, um, for, you know, it's a good, good challenge to have. It's not a problem. Problems are hard to find solutions for, challenges we can work through, so.
On the portable classroom, you said there was two.
Two units.
And, and how many classrooms are in a unit?
Uh, two classrooms per unit.
You had said they're adding on five to seven classrooms? And you're gonna do away with the? But you're only adding then one to three classrooms, aren't you? You have four right now, four extra that you're gonna do away with. And you're adding five to seven. But that takes into account the four that you're doing away with. I mean, am I, am I wrong?
I think what you're saying is, if we're adding seven and you've got four that are gonna disappear, that only leaves you with three additional classrooms. Is that where you're at? So, that's correct. Three additional classrooms. I mean, if you make them fourth and fifth grade classrooms, which is what the superintendent has kinda talked about, you can add, oh gosh, somewhere around twenty-five to twenty-seven kids a class. If you have kindergarten or to third, it's a smaller number. So, what that means is that, you know, I don't know how frequently they're using those four classrooms. I'm not in the operation of the school. It could be for preschool, it could be for EC students. So I don't know if they're in use all day, throughout the day. So, but like I said, I've had conversations with the superintendent, and he's very comfortable that five to seven classrooms, you know, will provide adequate public facilities once we hit August of twenty-twenty-three.
It seems odd to me that it's possible you're only adding one classroom to what you have right now.
Right. The mobile classrooms, as of right now, the school system doesn't count those as adequate public facilities. And so there, like I said, there are other plans that, and I can't get too far into it, that would have a new elementary school open sometime around August of twenty-twenty-four. But we're still working through some stuff on that.
Did the numbers were factored with the state mandate of lower classroom sizes as well?
The superintendent took that into account.
And when does that take place?
August next year, I believe. And I, don't ask me the ratios, because they're, they're very confusing, so. Any other questions about school projects? All right? Thank you.
You're gonna talk to us again later?
I'll be here till the end.
All right. All right, does anybody else have any questions for Mrs. Cicero or anybody else with the staff? All right, is there anyone here to represent the case? Please state your name and address for the record, although I'm sure they have it.
I'm gonna come up first and lay the groundwork for Mark. Just an old one thirty-one Springalane, Moyack, North Carolina. What I'm doing, my, my main goal is to get some answers to some of this. Ben did a good job, by the way, for answering a lot of mine, so he cut my time in half, by the way. So, but I, I still had some concerns with the staff report. Procedurally, we were not given this staff report, and it was just uploaded yesterday. So we, late yesterday, about twenty-four hours ago, so we didn't have the ability to, to really formulate some questions to the staff. So I guess this is the appropriate time, really, to, to try to give our input of what we think of the staff report on some respects.
I think the staff report was uploaded Friday?
It was not in a viewable format until four o'clock yesterday. I check it every half hour.
It's not, to my knowledge, everybody asked to see it.
Mark, did you see it? You couldn't either? Okay, just checking.
Good, did, did?
The link did not work till four o'clock yesterday. Irregardless, the, the, the point is, I just want some clarity on some of the items that are, that are on here. From a procedural standpoint, as y'all well know, we received TRC comments, and those were issued to us on the fourteenth of January. Our responses to those went back to twenty-fifth, which was our deadline. But again.
Those are included in your packet, packet page eighty-one, their responses to the TRC comments?
That's right. That is correct. So I guess on packet page eleven, I'll start my questions for Laurie, or, or, I guess she's best directed at him. On the proposed zoning, or on the zoning chart you have on there, why was there never anything indicated on what we're proposing?
I believe that was a proposed over here request, the conditional rezone to allow two hundred and seventy-seven single-family dwelling lots. That was part of it over here.
Where?
Right here, on packet page ten, the request conditionally, the request right there is to conditionally rezone to allow two hundred and seventy-seven single-family dwelling lots.
I understand.
It was also in the, in the narrative here.
I understand, but what I'm asking is, on the chart here that shows the feels-like density, the approximate units, why was there no reference in here as opposed to, to, to the project? Is there only boilerplate references? And historically, they've always had a proposal in line with these to show that, you know, some of these are a little more ambiguous.
That may have just been a simple overlook, because we probably assumed that it's here and it's in here also in the narrative. But as you can see in the, over here in the trips per day for the proposed, for the MXR, we did include that. That was probably a simple oversight.
But, but you can see how it's confusing to, to somebody who's a decision-making body or recommending body to, to see how it feels like two-point-eight-five when that's, that's inaccurate. MXR, four hundred and four lots, we're going for two seventy-seven. You can see how that's a little confusing, correct?
Right. And I believe in my, in, in, in my presentation, I did say that, although that, that you could ask for that, that you were proposing two hundred and seventy-seven single-family lots.
Okay, but the study material they had didn't say they had that, right?
No, but we did have it right here under the request, and we did have it under the narrative for the two hundred and seventy-seven lots. I mean, it's also in, in, in the, in the maps that you all presented.
Page twelve, there's a, there's a sentence in here that says, "It's important to note that NC DOT required the TIA for the Flora farms under the previous plan, but since the plan is not being updated, the same concerns remain." So we look back and we can't find anywhere that NC DOT required a TIA. We see where Tammy requested us to do a TIA. And, and I believe it was nine eleven nineteen, two twelve twenty, and one fourteen twenty-one. All TRC comments from NC DOT said no comment.
I, I think as far as the TRC, I think we're just asking for them to approve the memo, updated memo here.
Well, it says, I think it, it says, "It is important to note that NC DOT required the TIA." You're not asking for them to bless it, you're saying they required it, when that's a false statement.
If you say so, then.
Okay. Page thirteen. We have some traffic movement improvements that, for one, VHB. "We have some traffic movement improvements that, for one, VHB is one of the most highly-respected traffic engineering and analysis firms in all of North Carolina, working in conjunction with NC DOT. These counts do not consider the proposed school that is a part of this request. Therefore, the level of service projections are not accurate. January 25th, in our TRC comments, we, we, we specifically told you, page 81, maybe 82, there was no school proposed in this. However, that still never made it to the staff report."
It did, we took out that we had concerns about that, um, and we did remove it, and this was something that, um, probably was overlooked.
"Staff concerns," page 15, "Staff concerns regarding project consideration at this time. The soils in the project are concerned. They are found in the areas containing the commercial and upper-story dwelling units. Can you please point me to the direction of those?"
There are none of those, these were, um.
So, are the staff concerns met?
No, they have been met, because there are, once again, we've said that you've removed all the multifamily, upper, the 125 upper story.
Then why is this in the staff's concern that was issued to them Friday?
It was probably of an oversight.
God, a lot of oversight. Um, let's go to page 16. "While the, the request is less lots than the previous requested PDR denied, the same traffic concerns remain." So, buried in your guys' staff report is a four-page memorandum from VHB. The traffic count alone in this project went down 56.4%. Was it, was that not something you guys think was relevant to this new case?
Now, that was from the original, from the original.
From the original PDR request, yes, sir.
Which was a lot more homes.
And upper story in the commercial.
And was the school included in that study?
No, it was not included.
That school was not included.
No, sir.
As they proposed, just the additional homes.
Correct, so, so the new plan that's in front of you tonight had a drop in the average daily trips by 56.4%, but that was nowhere in this report. It remained the same, according to the staff.
And that percentage is just from, just the math from the different number of homes?
From the commercial we pulled out, we went from 100,000 square foot with upper-story dwelling.
Right.
And single-family behind it, to all single-family and 7,500 square feet. That reduction in traffic alone was 56.4%, nowhere, buried in your staff report.
You basically cut it in half.
Oh, yeah.
A little bit more.
I mean, that's, that is extremely relevant information, not saying nothing changed. That's not accurate, again, probably an oversight.
So, but we did, you know, on your packet page 12, uh, we did indicate that the number of trips here, the, uh, 2,651 trips per day, is what this proposal would be generating.
Mm-hmm.
And, and there, above that, you see that if you went for the, the, um, MXR for the full 404, then that would be something, um, you see the significant drop there, and I believe you all are probably, uh.
Where's it show the 8,600 that was proposed prior to this? In comparison, and, and, and I, I can read it again. "The same traffic concerns remain." So, you're telling me if a 9,000 trip per day community, you have the exact same concerns as a 3,000's trip per day community?
No, but I think we're still concerned that the number of trips.
That's not what it says, the same.
I think we're still concerned about the traffic.
The same traffic.
I think we're still concerned about the traffic as it's going to be generated.
Was there a level, uh, A, B, C, D?
Level of service?
A level of service. Was there one that was provided before and one now?
No, we have not done a new level of service. We have not, we have not got that from BH, VHB.
Okay, what was the level of service?
It, it was, I believe, it depended on the hours, AM, PM, I mean, it's a very, you know, it, it's a, and I'm not a traffic engineer, and I'm not going to act like I am. I, I do know that, you know, it does change by morning traffic, people going to work, evening traffic, people coming home. And I, I'm going to skip a few of these, because Ben, thank you for clarifying some of these items, on the adequate public facilities in your staff report that's, we don't agree with. Okay, so, we'll go to page 18. Actually. This is one of the things I wanted to get on. It, it, it talks about the memorandum that we provided that was kind of muddied together with the original TIA information in your packet. It says, "December 16, 2020 memo regarding the TIA must be approved by NC DOT," which today it is, it's approved. The memo notes, "Therefore, the new site plan does not warrant an update to the floor farm subdivision TIA. The trips projected into TIA will account for all traffic that is now proposed for the site." And that's quote. Now, if you refer back to like page 81 or wherever the, that is a cherry-picked line out of a whole memorandum conclusion that talks about the drop in the traffic. Why would you cherry pick one line out of that that was convenient for you?
I think.
And not the rest of the, and not the entire conclusion?
I think we were still concerned about the level of traffic, but there's no.
That was not a question. Why was one line cherry picked out of the conclusion in the memorandum when there was positives in it as well?
Well, I think we're showing that there is a reduction, and.
Really? I mean, I, you want me to read the whole thing, the whole finding and conclusion?
I think where there's still concerns over the amount of traffic that's generated on survey road.
And intermally concerns, we have concerns too, that's why we've hired the best in the, in the entire state of North Carolina.
And I think that's why that we've asked for DOT to approve.
And they have.
That memorandum.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
And, and, and we are completely in agreeance with that.
Okay.
And we have NC DOT's approval. Secondly, the land use plan and some of these policies that speak against this project, I think it's mighty convenient that on page 16 at the top, under land use plan, even the staff admits, "While the proposal is consistent with some policies in the land use plan, see attached list from developer for more detail." If anybody can find that list that we provided them with all 18 supporting policies in your packet, please direct me, because I could not. So, that conveniently got left out. But two very subjective policies that we don't agree with at all made it in there, but R17 or 18 didn't, but they reference it for you to look for. I think that's val- valuable information for this body to, to have, to absorb. Again, this board saw this project last year, 410 units, 100,000 square foot of commercial. You guys, three to one, voted that there were policies that were, that were supportive of this. How come they aren't in here?
I have to go back to the 200 and pull those.
But why didn't they make them in a staff report? You should not have to go back and dig up stuff when there's policies supporting it. I mean, that's wrong. I mean, this is, you know, again, this is a lot of time, money, and energy in our respect to try to defend ourself, when as a taxpayer in this county, that's what the planning staff's supposed to be doing, is giving a broad overview, both, you know, good pros and cons of a subdivision, not a bunch of cons and leaving out the pros. That's wrong, man. And I'm not going to continue through this packet, but I have notes on every page, because I'm pretty sure I'll get the same answer. So, Mark will, Mark will do our presentation. Again, I appreciate you guys' time, I'll answer any questions. If there's any for me, I can stand up here first.
I got one question for you real quick.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, again, I'm, I'm still focusing on the elementary schools and the time, you know.
Yes, sir.
You know, because that's important.
Absolutely.
You've got five phases.
Mm-hmm.
First phase, 55 lots, June 1st, 2022.
Yes, sir, so.
It'll take about six months, just on average.
Six months on average, yep.
So, end of the year, there's, my math tells me there's going to be an additional 13 students for the elementary school.
And I, and, and.
After the first phase is completed.
But that's very ambitious, that's saying 55 houses are under construction all June.
Yeah.
And that's, that's unrealistic from a development and a building standpoint.
Right.
You're not going to put 55, you might put five.
Right, right.
I mean, so.
What do you think you, what do you think you really build, you close per month, once construction starts?
Uh, it's, it's hard to say, I mean, it differs, it could be a few, two, three.
So, you may close, let's say, three or four in November, or four, five in December.
Exactly.
And going on.
Depending, depending on the time of year and how sales are.
So, you're not going to close all 55, so, okay.
So, yeah, if you wanted to say from a simple arithmetic standpoint, and phase one was to start all at one time and go bam, in six months you had 55 homes, worst-case scenario, unrealistically, you'd have 13 kids in 2023. And part of that structure is us working with the county and trying to, you know, and Ben's been a big help in that, trying to navigate, because we understand there's concerns with traffic, we understand there's concerns with kids, but progression's going to happen in these, you know, so we're trying to plan around that and wait for them to, to, to do these expansions.
And Ben, when did you say the, the elementary school expansion would be, pretty much, you were comfortable saying it would be complete?
August of 2023.
August, okay.
So, so the standard, obviously, as you guys well know, is the use permit, there's a timeline from the use permit, so you back into that. And that's what we've tried to do, we've delayed this project months and months, and even, it's probably a year and a half, to try to be accommodating, because we know there's serious concerns with schools. And we think we have a good plan moving forward. I mean, you know, we've cut the density down, I mean, the traffic to me is, is, I, I think the county is stepping out of their expertise level, when NC DOT gives us the thumbs up all day long.
It's all survey road, right? The traffic study's all survey road?
Well, it's, it's the intersection at the light, it's the intersection at survey, there's improvements we have to make periodically throughout the community.
So, it's survey going on, going by beaners on up, and then.
So, we, we surveyed all them intersections and included FOST as a background development to understand exactly what was going on with that.
We talked about drainage.
Mm-hmm.
What is the, what is truly the enforcement? You said that you were going to put $5,000 a year into a homeowner's, a homeowner's, um.
So, I think, and, and we did just, we got, Lori spoke on it a minute ago, we did get all of our, our easements, and we just cleared and snagged 3,000 feet of Roland Creek across the highway, all the way almost to the sound. So, that has been done, and there's drastic drainage improvements, but no, we are putting, I think it was, I think we had to have $50,000 either five years or 10 years for off-site improvements from these, to keep those perpetually maintained. So, what we have done is, and I think we spoke a little bit about it last time, we've created a, a, a drainage association, or a stormwater association, and this will, if we're fortunate enough to, to pass this, it'll be incorporated in, and it'll be managed by, by a company that, that's what they specialize in. So, inside the HOA, we'll have funds allocated, say $3 a month per resident, that goes into this drainage association.
Off-site.
Exact, well, off and onsite, so mainly off-site, because the HOA will take care of a lot of their stuff onsite, but if there's common elements, it'll take care of those maintenance as well, between these two communities.
Curious.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and I know that, I don't know if you have this, because you already have your own equipment, but I know that there's a foot per cost per foot.
Mm-hmm.
Clearing the ditch.
Yep.
And snagging it, and I'm not sure if the cost is, uh, more when a ditch hasn't been maintained than when it's been maintained. What is the cost for per foot, and how many linear feet are you looking at for, um, keeping that, keeping that maintenance? How much is it per foot, and how many?
So, yeah, your, your original question, yes, a, a cost per foot is a lot higher if there's a ditch that hadn't been maintained in 20 years. So, yes, yes to your original question. Second question is, the drainage, our primary focus on the drainage for these communities is going to be on Roland Creek, or, uh, is it Roland Creek, the big one? Yeah, Roland Creek, the new one we're cutting on ranchland, and all the way to Eagle Creek and downstream Roland Creek on the other side of the highway. So, those, those funds will be allocated to those, and it'll, it'll differ depending on the type of drainage feature, like, the dishes we're cutting will have a six to one slope or a three to one slope, they're a lot easier to maintain. You go across the street to Roland Creek, the guys wearing canoes, boats, chainsaws, and those have a little bit higher linear foot to maintain. But those calculations between our management company and Mark Bissel will all be, you know, that, that arithmetic will be, be done by those guys, so, and bidding, and the bidding process.
I mean, my, my concern is enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
And making sure the money is there, then, is there enough money to, uh, maintain that off-site? And then easements?
Mm-hmm.
You said you'd see easements, but of course, they were probably temporary easements, correct?
Uh, yeah, but I, I can tell you, we didn't, we didn't, uh, we didn't receive any pushback from a resident along the way, when we said, hey, we're going to come in here for free and clean your drainage. I can assure you that those easements would be granted again. I mean, we.
But they are current, so currently, no longer.
Well, we have write-of entries.
Okay.
So, it's not a recorded easement, you know, that's unfortunately asking a lot out of somebody to record an easement when they're talking about 50 homeowners between Eagle Creek and the, and the, the, uh, sound. So, the write-of-entry forms were, were pretty easily to obtain, because people understand the severity of drainage, and if somebody else is going to foot the bill to fix some problems, they weren't, they didn't have a problem. I mean, we didn't mess anything up, we signed agreements, if we did tear something up in their yards, we would fix it. So, and a lot of that work's been done, and I, I can tell you, it's going to be beneficial to that corridor.
So, out of 277, your numbers do go down with monthly, um, you know, input into that drainage, and that money is not only for onsite, is there going to be another fee beside the drainage? There's a homeowners association fee, and then there's just going to be strictly for drainage?
It says drainage in a light, but the line items will be, you know, grass cutting, lifeguards, dog park, it'll have, I mean, it's a list this big that we work with a management company, uh, HOA management company, and one of the line items is strictly stormwater maintenance, and that is a separate fee, so it might be, once these calculations come in and we have a better understanding of, will this subdivision be part of it, will it not, then we can say that's going to be five bucks, it's going to be 10 bucks, it's going to be 15 bucks, but since there's no houses sold in the first, first phase of FOST isn't recorded, we're still working through that process. So, but it, it will, we'll know from a bidding process and from a maintenance standpoint what that fee will be, and we'll make sure that it covers it, I mean. And from a monetary, you know, from an enforcement standpoint, I mean, if somebody's not paying their dues, I mean, the enforcement is, is a lien on their property.
I'm not so concerned about that, I'm more concerned about what enforces you, you're going to be gone, so we'll be, you know, the county will be.
Might be dead after these protests.
The county will be dealing with a homeowners association and a president of a homeowners association, and it's not like the county has that money, and I could go to the county and complain about baggage and drainage, so I'm, I'm thinking on a person who lives in ranchland, who may be incurring some problems with drainage, but they're going to go, and their, their beef is going to have to be, you know, not necessarily with the county, because the county's not responsible for really drainage.
Correct. I mean.
But, you know, there, I'm trying to, I'm trying to say, how do, how does that, is there a mechanism that can be put in place if this were to go forward, that protects someone from not necessarily complaining to the homeowners association and trying to get them to fix it? I mean, what, what kind of mechanism?
I would say yes, if I had to get, and I'm kind of steering off my, my path of expertise, but it's my understanding, and Ben or Lori could probably speak a little more, but there is a mechanism, like Dylan, for example, I mean, if there's something impeding a drainage inside a community, or, you know, something that we're supposed to be maintaining, he can enforce that with NOVs and, right?
Yes.
So, yes. So, yes, so there's a.
That would ultimately be on the responsibility of the homeowners' association.
It'll, yeah, it'll ultimately be on us, but there is a mechanism in place at the county level that can enforce that upon us.
And how far will that go? So you, you cross over the highway, does that stop, uh, before the highway, or what kind of, um?
No, we've allocated, that fifty thousand I was speaking of was actually just to off-site. I think that's how the conditions read, and I, is it marking? He's not in his head. So, yeah, so that fifty thousand was just for off-site. So, and like I said, we just did, I, I mean, we just did three thousand feet of it. Uh, the guys, they did a great job. They've actually, uh, finished, and we've had, uh, not Army Corps, Cam, who went out there? Yeah, we had Cam out there, and they gave us the green light, and then, you know, procedurally, we'll go next to their stormwater, uh, engineer and, and regulatory authority and get the green light. If not, we'll fix what we need.
Thank you. I don't mean to take up more time.
Did I answer that halfway? Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Thank you, guys.
All right. Am I driving from here, or do you do it from there?
Do you wanna drive? I think, I think they're working?
Good.
It was working the other day, Mark. I thought it was working.
Okay, thanks. All right. Before I get into the, into the PowerPoint, I think, you know, there were a couple of other questions that were, uh, directed by staff in my direction, and I'll kind of try to elaborate on, um. There were still a couple of outstanding drainage questions. One is, what, what does DOT design for? And it's my understanding that on a primary highway like that, they typically design for a fifty-year storm. Justin addressed the funding and, and O and M. Um, as far as the cost, Mike Doxie used to tell me, he pledged it at about two dollars a foot for clearing and snagging. County engineer, uh, told me about three dollars a foot. But, you know, it will depend on the size of it and how long it's been, like, like you said. Thing like, uh, was done over at the landing, where they were pulling cars out of, out of there. It's gonna be more than that. But if it's, if it's, uh, if it's done routinely, then those numbers, you know, probably will work. And, and how it works is, you know, we're, as, as Justin said, the, the big improvements, in addition to the downstream, that runs, uh, the improvements running through the site to Roland Creek, and with this proposal, those are going all the way to the pump station at Eagle Creek. Um, so what we're doing is actually increasing the capacity of that for people who are upstream. Uh, but at the same time, we're actually reducing the runoff that's coming off of Flora and FOST, that's the link that are going into that via the BMPs that we're building that are releasing at the two-year redevelopment wood rate, instead of farm runoff that goes in there now basically uncontrolled. Does that make sense?
Are you starting your presentation now, or?
Well, and then, well, then there was an issue, there was a question about the, um, the MXR density. I think, uh, Mr., uh, I think Mr. Bass had that question, um, on the MXR. And what's in the, what's, what's shown in the staff report just covers the limited service portion of that. And I'll get into this in a little more detail. But overall, between the full ser, service portion of, uh, of Flora and the limited service portion within the MXR itself, if you, if you weigh those, those two numbers, it's, it actually is consistent with the small area plan, and it's way below the, the, uh.
Land use.
Land use plan. Um, there was a question which, um, Justin basically addressed on the, on the home schedule, but just kind of, uh, further elaborating on that, you know, we would not see, expect to see occupancy of the first homes until January of twenty twenty-three, and, and then you might be seeing, you know, one student per month. So very, you might have a handful of students for that second part of the twenty twenty-three calendar year, but you're not gonna see any real impact on the schools until August of twenty twenty-three, or twenty, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, and then the, uh, after the August completion date of the expansions.
Let me ask Ben another question on that now, and it relates to what you just said. Isn't there, like, a, an issue with, with Raleigh? Like, you have to make sure, you have to time things right. You don't wanna have a school that opens that's not gonna be able to, to handle all the kids, because if that's an issue, you may not get some funding for an additional principal, additional, uh, 'cause I remember you had done a presentation. That's why I remember the point two four figure. And I think you had said something about, you know, there's got to be a, a, it's kind of a balancing act.
It, it is, so.
Because you don't wanna open up something and not have it at almost.
Right.
Capacity.
If you're, the general rule of thumb is that you don't wanna open a new school until you can fill the new school up about halfway.
Okay.
Because there are inefficiencies in principal costs, custody costs, utility costs, until you can meet kind of that critical mass.
Okay.
Having said that, which is not really part of what they're gonna do, the new elementary school we opened will more than likely take students from Moyac to Shawboro.
Okay.
And so, I think that gets back to your question. Shortly after the expansion, within a year, a new school hopefully will open. And then also, you're gonna have plenty of classroom capacity, Moyac, because you pull students from there to the new school, I think. I thought about that as I was sitting out there.
Okay.
All right, this, this is the, the elements of the, of the presentation. We're gonna show you the, an overview of the development. And we're gonna talk a little bit more about the changes from the previous proposal, go through a little bit more detail on the zoning commitments, address the staff concerns, and talk some more about compatibility and consistency, and then summarize.
Feel free to skip anything they've already touched, Dylan.
Be glad to. Uh, well, Miss LaCissera actually did a, a good job of presenting the overview of, of what the plan is. The only thing I'll add to that is that there's a lot of connectivity between this and, and the Flora development, both, um, vehicular and pedestrian connectivity, and we've got bike paths over there that'll be, that'll be connected. Of course, it's all single-family now, and what was originally proposed as a school site is not even actually part of the proposal at this point. It's outside the boundary of the, of the development. And as she indicated, the commercial comp owners have gone from a hundred thousand feet down to seventy-five hundred. In addition, this is intended to meet the community compatibility standards, um, as well as the non-residential design standards. And as you see, we've got these twenty-five hundred square foot, you know, smaller buildings that actually have, are fronting on Survey Road with a, with a main entrance, with basically would have entrances on both sides with the parking, you know, kinda tucked behind them. So coming up Survey Road, you'll actually see a nice, uh, building facade, uh, landscaping. We've also got these, uh, outdoor, an outdoor dining area, outdoor gathering space, and those kinds of things. And those are connected, uh, with, uh, multi-use paths to both Survey Road and to FOST and to one sixty-eight. So, we have a little formatting issue that seems to have happened when this was reloaded. But, um, the, the intent of this slide is to show you what was proposed before, that this board actually recommended for approval, that the county commissioners thought was, um, a little too intense for the site. And so what we did was, we reduced it from four hundred and ten dwelling units to two hundred and seventy-seven, from a hundred thousand square feet of commercial to seventy-five hundred. Lot coverage went from forty percent to thirty percent. The lot width, and that's actually reversed on the side, went from sixty feet to one hundred feet minimum lot width. Uh, traffic went, uh, from eighty, three hundred and eighty trips down to thirty-six hundred and fifty-two. So we're, we now have forty-three percent, forty-three point six percent of what was proposed before on an average day, and forty-eight percent on a peak hour. This is the evening peak hour for that one, one hour. And then open space increased from thirty percent to forty-one percent. So those are the primary changes. The zoning conditions that we have proposed are to continue the improvements that were started on FOST by going all the way to the pump station at Eagle Creek. By, um, and, and, and one thing that's not on here that I need to mention is that while the Roland Creek ditch is actually being improved through Flora with the FOST development, with this development, we'll be dedicating fifty-foot easements on either side for ongoing operation and maintenance, and also then funding that part of the maintenance through the HOA, uh, and Stormwater Association for this development. Uh, improving the drainage ditch along the boundary between this property and Eagle Creek and ranchland. And the people that were, that came to the, uh, community meeting were, were very enthusiastic about that, because they do have a, a definite drainage problem in that area that we can, can help solve. And we'll be modeling and managing that for the hundred-year storm event, and also constructing berms on our side of that ditch to protect those folks from, from runoff, from the development. And then, we've kind of already been through the phasing, um, only fifty-five lots in the first phase, six months between phases. And, uh, no recordation until June of twenty twenty-two, and again, that would not start producing students until twenty twenty-three. So staff indicated a number of concerns in the staff report, and I'm gonna address each one of those. The land use plan is indicated, does have this property categorized as full service, and policy HN1 would allow up to three dwelling units per acre versus the one point three seven proposed. Policy AG six recommends compact village-like clusters, as we're doing here with these various development residential phases. It is an infill between existing subdivisions. Uh, traffic has been addressed, and traffic seemed to be the primary, uh, reason that staff was citing potential conflicts between both the small area plan and the land use plan. But we've actually addressed, um, traffic, and, uh, and I'll get into a little bit more about that later. The Board of Commissioners determined that the adjacent FOST development was consistent at two units per acre. So this is actually more consistent than that one was with both the land use plan and the small area plan. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more, um, after a while, about the consistency. So the small area plan calculations, uh, full service area is seven, seventy-two point seven acres, um, versus a hundred and twenty-nine acres of limited service. And the purpose of this slide, again, is just to kind of further address that small area plan consistency. So your density allowed in the full service area under the small area plan would be a hundred and forty-five units, and in the limited service, a hundred and twenty-nine point seven, for a total of two seventy-five on the average. Two hundred and seventy-seven is what we're proposing, so basically consistent with the small area plan, and four hundred and four would be allowed in the, um, land use plan. So regarding school facilities, the UDO, oh, let me just back up on the other one. The UDO does not require that the small area plan density be strictly adhered to per district. The density can be appropriate if the overall density mix is consistent with the overall designations, and it's within the county commissioner's discretion to determine the weight to give each policy. To the extent that adequate public facilities are relevant at the zoning stage, they're not required to be programmed to be in place within two years of zoning approval. And in any event, uh, as the county manager indicated, those agreements are being entered into that will cause those facilities to be in place about the time we start occupying houses within a significant degree. And in any event, uh, we would not be seeking a, um, use permit until that two-year criterion is met, which we would assume would be this coming August. And that can be a condition of approval. So regarding the traffic concern, the average daily traffic has been reduced by over fifty-six percent. Even though the traffic is less than half of what it was before, we're still making the same roadway improvements to Survey Road and those intersections. And from that standpoint, the the recommendations are the same from the traffic engineer. So, you know, if you make those recommendations, you are more than adequate, since those were adequate for more than twice the traffic. And what, uh, DOT actually said was, the department has reviewed the Flora Farms trip generation update, which accounts for the reduction of both the commercial and the residential space in the proposed Flora Farm subdivision. Additionally, we have reviewed Nathan Romberg's phasing comments, that's the VHP engineer, and both are acceptable to the department. Please note that the reference reduction development will only serve to improve the level of service adjacent to this site, for which the develop, the department has tentatively approved access. And he said, tentatively approved access, because we haven't actually requested a permit for access at this stage. That comes, that comes later. So, so DOT had actually approved it at, you know, those improvements to handle the eighty-three hundred and eighty, um, trips per day. And so they are more than adequate to handle these with those trips. The, uh, I think the soils comment was, was addressed, and I think that maybe was a vestige from the, the previous comment. But just in case it's not, you know, these soils are similar to the FOST soils, they're similar to the curthuck station soils. They're typical of Moyac development everywhere, and good planning and design can overcome those limitations. And this map is not very easy to see on the screen, but you can see that this, we are right in here, and it has essentially the same soil types that you see over here in, in curthuck station. With proper planning and design, the soils are, are not, uh, limiting. Staff mentioned a concern about wastewater in the report. Um, it's the collection system that has had the issues primarily to Eagle Creek, but the treatment plant is operating properly, and the collection system is not being utilized. There was a, and a, a misstatement in the staff report that Curthuck Water and Sewer is operating under NOVs, which is incorrect. Standardly Utilities was operating under NOVs, which are being addressed or have been addressed. And Curthuck and Water and Sewer is in the process of acquiring that utility. Both DEQ and the Utilities Commission will be approving the new connection, and the county commissioners, as you probably know, have already included Flora in the wastewater service area that was approved for, for Eagle Creek. And, uh, which was one of the, the reasons, I think, that this board thought it was a good idea before, you know, adding Flora to the service area will help everybody's rights and benefit all the customers. So regarding the consistency review. And I don't have this on the slides. But just kind of on, on page one, I'm just going to run through these quickly through these policies whether they are consistent with the UDO standards. The density, of course, one point three seven units per acre. The UDO allows policy AG6, compact village-like clusters, policy HN1, density is appropriate for the location. Policy HN3, a mixture of uses promoting balanced self-supporting community centers. And you could look at the slide, you know, you'll see that this is basically an infill development that is filling the last gap there between existing large residential developments around it on all sides. Utilities, you know, stormwater is being improved in a way that is benefiting the neighboring properties. Wastewater is, we're connecting, you know, the wastewater statement is that package plants are, are supported and central wastewater facility is supported by the full service area of the land use plan designation. Will have a positive impact on adjacent properties because of the sewer connection. There's, there's policy WS7, use, appropriate use of packaged sewage treatment plants. Policy WQ3, addressing soil erosion and stormwater runoff. Policy WQ4, recreational and open space. Concerns are being addressed by providing sidewalk, greenways, walking trails, et cetera. Policy TR9, bikeway facilities. Policy PR4 on the next page. Again, open space, greenways, hiking trails, et cetera. Policy PR6, adequate open space and recreational improvements. And as Ms. LaCicero stated, we do have a swimming pool, we have a clubhouse, we have multi-use paths, we have a dog park, and we have all these facilities that are being interconnected for pedestrian access. Policy TR12, regarding roadways and drainage infrastructure. Policy TR9, circulation between neighborhoods. And then there are several consistencies with the Moyac area policy emphasis of the land use plan. Including clustering housing developments, locating where onsite wastewater is available, limiting to one to two units per acre. And then, of course, it's consistent with the future land use map. And then consistent with several policies of the Moyac small area plan itself, including policies TR1 regarding interconnected multi-modal transportation. Policy IS1 on services being borne by those creating the demand. Policy IS4, addressing stormwater runoff. Policy R1 regarding the expansion of recreational opportunities. And then as far as the UDO itself, we've got five policies listed there that are consistent with the UDO regarding density, location, intensity of development, wetland protection, exceeding the open space requirements. And then each of the other ten requirements or suggestions for, that are outlined in the UDO for final, defining of a consistency statement are addressed here. And I think I'll, unless you want me to, I'll not go through them at this stage. Sheriff, what do you think? But some of the, that it would not result in significantly adverse impacts on the land values, would not conflict with the public interest, is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance and so forth. Any questions on the consistency statement? I'll give you a couple of minutes because there's quite a bit of information there.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bissell?
Permission been received from the Eagle Creek.
Well, Eagle Creek actually request, made the request, so I think, so we haven't formally requested it, you know, the agreement, but I'm sure it'll be forthcoming.
But you don't have that yet, but they've requested that, so, okay. What about fire and EMS? Has, have we addressed that adequate?
Well, one of the things that this development actually will do, which is one of the points on this summary slide, is that we'll be looping the county water system where it's currently not looped. So there will be improving the fire protection by coming under 168 with a new, a new main, a twelve-inch water main. I believe it's going to be in running up Survey Road, connecting that to both the Foss development, but then that will allow the connection to the six-inch line there at the school, which will provide additional fire protection for them as well. So the master plan, we think, is attractive and meets a, a need demonstrated in the land use plan, as we indicated its phase over several years to minimize impacts. These zoning commitments that are being made will benefit the area, including the drainage and the fire protection and the pedestrian connectivity. It is consistent with the comprehensive plans. Adequate public facilities are being addressed to the degree that they need to be at the zoning stage and will be addressed to the letter at the land, at the use permit stage. And we believe it's in harmony with the area. And in fact, going back to the slide, it basically completes this piece. And this board had recommended approval of the higher density project, I think largely because of the other ancillary, ancillary benefits that come with it. You're still getting the benefits, but you're getting a lower impact, a lower density and lower intensity land use. But the project, I think, works very well. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bissell? Any further questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Bissell. I don't see, think we have any questions right now, but if we do, we'll call you back. All right, I'll open the floor for public comment. If there's anybody here that wishes to speak on it. Don't see anybody, so we'll close the public comment. Are there any questions or discussion at this time?
Mr. Stikeleather, you, you had said, I think, they, they, I mean, it's almost positive, they're going to start a new elementary school in twenty-twenty-three and it would be open during the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year?
I mean, my hope is that we have a new elementary school open August of twenty-twenty-four. If we begin design work in August of twenty-twenty-one, which I think is, it's, it's a little ambitious, but I think we can get there, then you could see a new school open in August of twenty-twenty-four.
So the, just to clarify, the addition on Moyac Elementary would be twenty-twenty-three, the new school would be twenty-twenty-four, and then take capacity out of Moyac and Shawburn?
And I'm speaking a little out of turn there because that's really up to the Board of Education, but I think that's what makes.
This is a tentative.
Yeah, that's what makes sense. Could it push to twenty-twenty-five? It could, but in conversations I had even two years ago with designers when we were trying to work through schools, they said three years. If you build what's called a non-prototype school, so in other words, the plan's already been approved by the state, that process can go a little faster because you're not, you're not reinventing the wheel.
I'm, I'm almost surprised then they're building on the Moyac Elementary. Why wouldn't they put a couple more portable classrooms?
I think that what you'll see is that by adding the Moyac Elementary, it's going to push a additional new elementary school, you know, much further down the road. I think that the, we're trying to think about not the, this coming project, but the next one. And then to be honest with you, Moyac Elementary, and I don't know who all's been in that school, it's going to receive some substantial improvements through the project. The kindergarten areas like half walls and it's really loud. And so we're gonna, as part of this, there's also refurbishments that come to the school. So I, I think it's, it has some added benefits as well.
This is a side note, I always thought it was a very nice school. My kids went there.
The, the issue with the kindergarten classrooms, I understand it from the superintendent, is I guess it gets noisy.
It, it does. When they have that nap time, I had a problem with my son.
The, the other thing that we're looking to do, and, and I'm getting a little ahead of the superintendent here, is to connect the cafeteria to the, the older, I guess, high school is what it was back in the day, to provide some safety and security. Also, the cafeteria is a little small even now, so having some expansion there would be beneficial. So th- those are the kind of improvements that, yeah, no, it's, it's a lovely school. I mean, it's a, it's funny, our assistant county engineer who will be managing the project, Michelle Perry, you know, she went there from kindergarten to, I guess, whatever. And, uh, yes, it's, it's fun for her, I think, working on a building that she went to as a kid, but.
I think it's nice to get the kids out of the trailers if possible, that, you know, that's, that's a great thing. I know when I went to school here, there was quite a few trailers. I had classes in trailers and we got to a point that there was no trailers anywhere in the county and I liked that.
Yeah, I think, um, like I said, I think it serves a purpose thinking about that, not the next school, but the school after it gives some, yeah, I could keep going, but I won't, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for you, Laurie. And it's really kind of confusing what, like, capacity was committed for lots that are already approved and ready to go, subdivisions that are not necessarily approved, but do you, are not approved, but how many lots are, like, ready to go but not built? Permit, is there any way of, like, kind of, kind of nailing that down a little bit? Like, how many subdivisions are currently under construction? How many lots were per those subdivisions? I, I know I'm asking you a lot right now, but just right now, permitted that haven't taken occupancy, is there a way to?
We do track that.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, and let me emphasize this, that committed capacity, that committed, i- is a planning tool. It's not saying, oh, we've got committed capacity, so you don't need to approve this subdivision. We're actually talking about actual capacity is, is the reason. But the committed capacity should be something that, you know, you take into account between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education about when to build a school, when to expand a school. It should be taken into account for the, the phasing of a project. That's what that committed capacity is there for. So it's not, it, it's a number that you need to kind of keep in mind, but it's not like the actual capacity, where that's like the actual number of kids in there. Now, what happens when a house is built in, because we, we do keep track of it, we update it one to two times a year, depending on our, our workload, but I can pull that up in just a moment. But it goes from committed capacity into a, a kid. Because once, once a house is built, either you're going to have a kid or not, you know, that's when that, then that kid's going to enroll in school and he'll become, that kid, he or she will then become an actual student. So I don't want you to, I, I, that number of committed capacity is a planning tool and not necessarily something that needs to be, it needs to be kept in mind, but it's not something that, you understand what I'm saying? Yeah, it's a planning tool.
A, a formula to try to figure the worst-case scenario and.
It's really to help myself and the superintendent think through when we have, when we start looking for land and when we need to start planning, so more than it's about the actual head development that's there.
Correct. Um, but it's also good as a tool for you, for phasing. If you know you're getting close and you have a four or five hundred lot subdivision, then, you know, setting up a phasing so that you only have a certain number of lots come in a year. And that, and that's a tool, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, and I can give you, now, I just, um... We have not, we do keep track of this and I can, I can get you, um... Because we have not, we have not gone over this information and I don't know exactly. I know it was updated last September, but we do have and we can, um, you know, we have a significant number of lots outstanding that could be built and we have a significant number of COs that are, are, you know, building permits that are being issued and COs that are, that are being issued as well.
It helps to kind of like, when all this comes before you, it just helps a little, you know? But I like, I like your explanation for the committed capacity.
Okay, and we can, if that's something that you all would like to see in your staff report, we can, or, or an explanation to go along with what's, okay.
Ms. LaCicero?
Yes.
Question. I know this is saying there's supposed to be sixty-nine more students based on this, once the new subdivision's in, but what about the ones that are based on, Mrs. Kraus, that are currently in progress, like off Waterly and, I, I can't, the ones behind the, the library off Tolles Creek? And I, and I assume there's other subdivisions being built now too, that the houses are being sold now, people are moving in now. Does that take, is this take, is that taken into account?
That's part of the committed capacity. So we do track, um, the number of, of major subdivision lots. We have it all listed out by township and I'm not very good at talking and looking on my laptop right now to pull that information up, but we do, we do track that. And at, at least once a year, we go from, we, we pull all our COs that we've issued from those major subdivisions and we update, we update that list. So it goes, you know, we're tracking, I want to say, I'll give you a, for instance, and I'm going to do some ballpark figures, so please do not jump on me about this or, um, let's say Glenmore Ridge. Glenmore Ridge subdivision, one of the ones behind the library, has either fifty or fifty-five lots, I can't remember right here off the top of my head. And so when we get the spreadsheet, Glenmore Ridge goes in, what stage it is, whether it's like a use permit or if it's a final plat. Final plat means lots have been created. And then we start going to tracking the number of COs, number of lots that are remaining to be built upon. And, and so we, we track that number. So let's say, you know, Glenmore Ridge has fifty lots, it goes in as fifty lots and as, you know, every, once a year or potentially every six months, depending on our workload. You know, if we've got seven or eight, let's say we have eight COs issued in Glenmore Ridge in the past six months, well, that number would go from fifty to then forty, two lots remaining. And, and then those children, those eight hopefully would be then enrolled in school if their, if those houses are generating kids. So we, we do track all the major subdivisions like that and I can definitely get you that information. Except if I was better at multitasking. Except if I was better at multitasking, talking, without talking with my hands.
Sure, can you come up here?
Not my meeting.
Make it quick, though.
No, I was just going to say that that committed capacity number, if I'm, I could be wrong, but it used to be all subdivisions, no matter the, the length of time they've been at some approval stage. So, for example, what's the one in Idlet? It's been there for a while.
Currituck Crossing?
That's in committed capacity. So you see where I'm going? There's a lot of, it's, it's not like.
That's that one that nobody's building.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. So the committed capacity, like they said, for their planning purposes, you know, they, obviously, they have to take into consideration anything that's plotted or in the process, but, so that number may be a little aggressive, but it also includes a lot of things that are just at any stage of the, of a development, and ones that are 15-year, Coinjack Meadows, that's in there.
Well, if they still have, if they still have an open lot, I mean, they technically, I know, I understand your point, but if there's an open lot, I mean, that's technically a house that could be built.
But the committed capacity is any level of approval, correct?
They have to have, they have to have a use permit issued to go into that committed capacity. They have to have a use permit. Now, we do track, I'm trying to get there. So, but once again, this is just, you know, it's a tool. It's not, you know, I don't want you to sit here and say, oh, but the major subdivision, but it, and I'm, I'm not trying to, to add to this, but it does not take into account family subdivisions or minor subdivisions. We just track the major subdivisions. So, so kind of, kind of temper that. You know, yes, we are representing things that have been approved for 15 years and maybe have one or two lots that are still outstanding.
Gives the medium.
Yeah, so, but it does not include family subdivisions and minor subdivisions.
Are there any, does anyone else have any other questions? Questions, discussion? All right, hearing none. I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, I move to approve PB 2102 Flora Farm because the request is consistent with the land use plan because Policy HN3, Currituck County shall especially encourage two forms of residential development, each with the objective of avoiding traditional suburban sprawl. Number two, compact mixed-use developments or developments near a mixture of uses that promote a return to balanced, self-supporting community centers generally served by centralized water and sewer. The types of development are contemplated for the full-service area identified on the future land use map. Policy CD1, neighborhood-serving commercial districts should be encouraged to locate where a collector or secondary street intersects with a street of equal or greater size. Appropriately designed, small-scale business may also be near other neighborhood-serving facilities such as schools and parks. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the increase in the number of residential rooftops may bring additional commercial development to Moyac.
All right, we have a motion?
Hi, just.
Sure.
Some of those conditions, I'd like to make sure that.
The additional TRC conditions?
Yes.
And what are those?
I would just add additional TRC conditions.
And within my motion, I will add the additional TRC conditions that are detailed in the, in the package. In the phasing, yeah, I wanted to make sure I get that in there, yeah.
All right, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item. Everybody still okay? Ready to go on? All right. We have agenda item PB 1823, amended PDR number three. Left-street stub connection to the Flora Farm property on the northwestern property line. And Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the redesign of Flora, conditional MXR, now there are going to be a street stub out between Falls and Flora. So this is a connection between Falls and Flora. Now, the Flora has gotten redesigned. This is a design that's going to come in for Leaf Street. Flora PDR zoning, we all know it's located next to, next to the Flora proposal in ranchland. It is in the full service area. The 2006 land use plan did limit its service area of the Moyac small area plan. We should have done a zoom in on this, but the Leaf Street stub out is right here. And you may ask, why is this having to come forward to us for this one approval? Well, the UDO has a requirement, or PDR, if you're changing street access, that's considered a major change, and it has to come back through the entire process. So, the BOC, the Board of Commissioners, did the original approval of Falls' PDR in May of 2019. Amendment one was in November 2019. Amendment number two, the one you all of us recently heard, was that was approved in December of 2020. And now this request is, like I said, the Leaf Street connection to the Flora property. So the 2006 land use plan classifies this as full service within the Moyac subarea, and the policy emphasis of properly managed growth and an increased urban level where they're sure to experience over the next decade and beyond. Pursuers proposed, the central pursuers proposed additional services are available to hire, and the character of the surrounding area supports it, higher density rate from 34 units could be considered. The Board of Commissioners did find that the proposed plan is consistent with all the policy in the plan, Policy HN1, Currituck County shall encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for location. The Moyac small area plan, so the BOC found that the proposed plan is consistent with following policy in the Moyac small area plan. Policy LW1, promote compatibility between new development and existing development to avoid adverse impacts to the existing community. So TRC recommends approval of the amended plan development residential rezoning with the following conditions. We prefer to cease some highway commercial development as part of the Falls Act on Currituck Highway and including the Phase 2 and 3. This was a comment that was given by Economic Development. Any impacts to jurisdictional waters or wetlands in the United States require prior approval from the U.S. Army Corps. And drainage utility requirements in the June, the June 24, 2019 approval remain unchanged. So that map that I referred you all to earlier, that that, those conditions remain in effect. So a fairly simple storyboard request for this addition of Leaf Street. If you all have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer those.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. LaCicero? No? All right. Normally, we would have someone present, but you've already done that. Are you, are you all coming up to present anything on this? Do you need to?
Well, the one thing that I, yes, Mark Bissel, the one thing that I should probably address is that first TRC recommendation, well, you know, we would like to accommodate that. That train left the station a long time ago, and there are now ponds fully constructed and building sites that have been upgraded in the area where where commercial development could be done along, along Kerituck Highway.
So you're saying the first request is probably not possible?
Not possible. And then as far as the.
How about the last two?
The interior part of commercial development, you know, you want the rooftops to be there so that when you, you know, so that if, if the downstairs of those townhome units to become commercial, that they would actually, there'd be people there to support it. So that's why it's in the, in a later phase.
How about the?
The other one, the other two conditions are fine.
You're okay with those?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bissel? No, thank you. All right, any more questions for Ms. LaCicero? Anything? All right, open the floor for public comment. Anybody else wishes to speak? Ben, you got anything on this? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion at this time? Open the floor for a motion.
I move to approve PB 18-23 Falls Plan Development amended. It is consistent with, number one, it is consistent with all the review standards provided under the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO, Section 2, what was it? 243C, BOC 62419. The conditions placed on the development will improve drainage problems on the property with nearby Ranchland and Eagle Creek subdivisions if improvements are made to the drainage system on off-site properties, BOC 62419. It is compatible with existing Moyac Township subdivisions, BOC 62419. Under conditions of approval, number one, any impacts to jurisdictional waters or wetlands of the United States require prior approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And number three, drainage improvement, or number two, I'm sorry, drainage and utility requirements in the June 24, 2019 approved order remain unchanged. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it is required by changed conditions acknowledged by the land use plan and addresses a demonstrated community need providing a full-service area that offers mixed-use development with both residential and commercial components, BOC 62419.
Would you mind adding the last two of those TRC recommendations?
Well, if I could read them, I could.
Well, oh, okay, you already did.
I think he, he did when he made the motion, because it was, it's actually on the motion form. He just didn't read the first one.
I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize. You've already done that.
Yep.
Sorry about that. All right, that's his motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor?
It was Gary. Gary beat me to the, to the five.
I think it was a tie.
I think it was a tie. But I'll let it go to you.
We'll let you have it this time. All right, motion pass.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to take a break?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Take a quick break. All right, we're, we're back. We are on to agenda item PB 2102 Hutchinson's rezoning. Request for a conventional rezoning of 11.27 acres from general business and agriculture to general business and mixed residential. The property is located on Kerituck Highway in Grandy, Tax Map 94, Parcel 113A, Poplar Branch Township. And Ms. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. I did want to note one little minor typo on the first page of your packet 106, case number is 21-02, which you just said correctly. That's on page 106 of your packet. So the applicant, Main State Construction, Don Williams, is requesting a conventional rezoning of property that's owned by Jim and Phyllis Hutchinson, located on Kerituck Highway in Grandy. And the property is located on the west side of the highway, just north of the Carolina Club Drive, the entrance to Carolina Club, and south of Augusta Drive. The property is under contract, which gives the applicant standing to make this rezoning application. I just want to clarify that this is a conventional rezoning, a straight rezoning. It is not a conditional zoning application. If you had a chance to read through your staff report, you'll notice that there's lots of discussion about conditional rezoning. That was statute recommendation, so some of those comments are related to conditional rezoning. In North Carolina, it's illegal to impose conditions on rezonings of conventional zoning districts. So therefore, this is, you cannot impose conditions. This request is a straight rezoning request. So the property is here in Grandy. Property to the north, let's see if I can use the mouse here. Property to the north here is a self-service facility. Here to the north, out on Kerituck Highway, is automobile repair and service. You may have seen some trucks parked out there. To the north of that is Junior's Plaza, that strip development there on Kerituck Highway. To the south on this parcel here, out here is Beacon Seafood, and the rest of the property appears to be undeveloped. To the east, across the highway, these are single-family dwellings. And to the west is the Carolina Club, open space subdivision. Carolina Club is a development that's approximately 288 acres, 166 acres of open space. And overall density for that Carolina Club development is .63 according to the amended sketch plan for that development. Here's the current zoning. You can see the property to the north, Zone GB. Some of the parcel has some split zoning of GB and Ag there to the north. One other, this right here is the, I think it's called Grandy Community Church now. It used to be called Grandy Assembly. Let's see here. And then Carolina Club is Zone Ag. It's an open space subdivision and Ag zoned lands. Property across the street, general business, and to the south is general business and Ag as well. The parcel is designated as full service within the Grandy subarea. The full service designation, and the, so the policy emphasis of land use plan is to allow Grandy to evolve as a community center. Residential, according to the land use plan, residential densities should be medium to high depending on available services. And this is found in your packet on page 107, the land use plan. There's an extensive list of land use policies in there. The applicant held a community meeting on December 14, 2020, and that meeting summary is attached in your agenda packet as well, on page 121, if you're interested in taking a look there. So here is an exhibit. I took, Jason, I took your, your drawing there and just colored, colored it so it would be a little bit easier to see on the screen. This is the existing zoning out there on the parcel. It's approximately 6.66 acres of general business currently and 4.61 acres of agriculture. Property is currently split-zoned. This request does remove the GB zoning line closer. This request does remove the GB zoning line closer to Carritoque Highway to here. So here's, here's the, so here's current, and here's the request. The request is to remove the GB line closer to the highway, and then this portion in the rear would be MXR. So 3.7 acres of GB, 7.57 acres of MXR. So the intent of the general business zoning district is to accommodate small to medium-sized commercial office, personal service, and institutional uses that provide goods and services to county residents and visitors, in ways that protect the county scenic corridors as well as maintain the traffic carrying capacity of major roadways. And the intent of the MXR zoning district is to provide moderate-cost housing options for county residents within well-designed neighborhoods and developments that incorporate open space resources, and may also include limited non-residential uses close to housing. So this rezoning request appears to be an attempt to maximize residential development density of the parcel here in the rear with MXR while still retaining the GB zoning district along Carritoque Highway. With the current zoning, the parcel, you can see there's a small portion of Ag in the rear, 4.4 and a half acres about. Residential development potential of the property is limited. Subdivision options are limited to minor or traditional subdivisions with minimum 40,000 square foot lots. And after the fifth lot, open space requirements of the ordinance are triggered. So a few lots may be created on the parcel with the current split zoning. It appears maybe five lots max. Jason may have done some more technical look at that, and our Mr. Mazel from Timmons Group, you can certainly ask him about that when he, he comes up to present. But residential development density appears to be limited the way the parcel is currently zoned. So the requested bifurcated zoning results in almost, I'm looking here to see if I made a typo here on the slides or in my notes. All right. So 7.57 acres of MXR with a maximum potential. This is just based on doing straight density math of the maximum density in MXR, two units per acre would give a potential of 15 lots. Obviously, that would need to be designed, so 15 lots may not be feasible on this parcel with all of the requirements. The remaining GBs and portion of the property may be developed into two or three lots along the highway. And the requested density is, is greater than that of the adjacent parcel, especially to the, to the west, the Carolina Club Open Space Subdivision with .63 units of density. One option for the property could be to rezone to a conventional or conditional general business that may give the ability to create a few, few more lots on the parcel. Staff would probably rather see a conditional general business, so uses that may not be compatible with that adjacent golf course, open space development, Carolina Club could be excluded. So rezoning requests are opportunities to guide development patterns and address compatibility. On your packet on page 112, or, I'm sorry, 110, rather, there is a use comparison by zoning district. It shows the uses that are allowed in MXR and uses that are allowed in general business. In the MXR table, the uses that are allowed in Ag, so as the property that's currently zoned Ag, those uses are highlighted in green. Uses that are underlined are allowed in general business, and the ones that, that are neither green nor underlined are, are allowed in MXR. One other thing I wanted to note about this request is that the request is not, straight MXR does not give you the flexibility to do multifamily development. Multifamily requires a conditional zoning, so this is, this would not result in multifamily development the way it's currently proposed.
It would only result in single-family dwellings?
Correct. Or other uses allowed in MXR, any of the uses in that table for that portion of the property, and then the front portion would still retain the right to do any of the uses in that GB table at the bottom.
Okay.
Any questions on those uses?
Anybody?
So we did include several policies in the land use plan, and some staff commentary related to those policies. Some housing and neighborhood policies, HN1. So we just kind of asked, is this the right location and the right density for this parcel? And staff. So county water is available, onsite waste water is going to be required, and the proposed MXR transitional zoning district appears to be a change to the existing development pattern with MXR proposed directly adjacent to Ag agriculture. Policy HN3. I'm not going to read that whole policy to you, but just, this staff commentary that the property may develop as a mixed-use development, that appears to be what the request is. And there's an opportunity to require a properly planned development under singular zoning. HN9 regarding incompatible land uses. The board may consider limiting, obviously not through this request, but in a separate request, may consider limiting allowable non-residential uses on the site. May not be ideal for a convenience store. There may be other uses that, that may want, you may want to limit on the, on the parcel. Page 108 of the packet, Commercial Development Policy 1 regarding neighborhood serving commercial. The property is not located on an intersection. Conceptual plan that would be, would, would go along with a conditional zoning request would give an opportunity to address access and appropriate small-scale businesses for the, for the property, as well as layout. Policy CD2 Commercial, regarding commercial and mixed-use centers. Commercial uses greater than neighborhood scale should be excluded to curtail strip development and minimize traffic. This request is a retention of GB zoning adjacent to MXR, and GB uses may need to be limited for compatibility with MXR that will likely have a residential component. CD3 regarding large commercial centers. Large partial uses should be excluded. GB uses may need to be limited for compatibility. So you can kind of see some of the, the same comments for the different policies. Highway-oriented uses, the same conceptual development plan can give assurances that development is compatible and provide access points and limit strip development potential. And then there's Policy CD8 regarding mixed-use developments. Properly planned from the outset, which allow for compatible mixture of residential and non-residential uses with a pedestrian scale and design are encouraged. Ideally, the subject property will be properly planned, and a conceptual development plan with allowable uses and site design features, including pedestrian circulation and access, will help to ensure the property is designed and compatible with residential and non-residential uses. Got ahead of myself there. Sorry. But you can't see it up there anyway, right? So there is a concern with potential spot zoning. Spot zoning can be legal if it meets the five factors of validity that are found in your agenda packet on page 111. These are some concerns that staff has related to those factors, that the request is for just one parcel. It's a relatively small parcel with just one owner instead of multiple parcels added together. Approval would secure special benefits for the property owner that are not afforded to the neighboring property owners. For example, the owner would be able to increase the density for the parcel that the surrounding properties could not achieve. The parcel size of 11.7 acres with only 7.57 acres of MXR, generally, the smaller the tract, the more likely the rezoning could be held invalid. The land use compatibility issues that I just reviewed, and the relationship of existing and future uses, adjacent properties are zoned GB and Ag and compatible uses, and disproportionate density among the properties is a concern. This might not be the ideal location for a transitional MXR zoning designation. Any questions on the spot zoning? No? Lori showed you this earlier, so I won't, I won't take too much time here, but these are the, the standards and the ordinance that you may consider when you're making a recommendation on rezoning applications, whether it's consistent with county adopted plans, whether it conflicts with ordinances, is required by changed conditions, demonstrates a community need, or addresses a demonstrated community need, is compatible with the surrounding land, doesn't adversely affect nearby lands, results in logical and orderly development, would it result in significant adverse impacts on the natural environment, is it adequately served by public facilities, not result in impacts on land values, adverse impacts on land values, and not conflict with the public interest and is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance? So this conventional rezoning request results in a substantial density increase and the potential for non-residential development adjacent to a high-quality, low-density residential development in the Carolina Club. To ensure that the development will be a compatible, well-planned, mixed-use development, staff's opinion that a conditional zoning application should be submitted and reviewed. In an effort to provide assurances that address the 2006 land use plan compatibility policies, staff recommends that the applicant submit a conceptual plan that could provide, provide desired flexibility for the applicant with assurances that the application maintains the community values and consistency with the officially adopted county plans. Staff does suggest that the, this conventional rezoning request, and I, I have a mistake here on the slide. This says conditional, but it's conventional rezoning. That's also in your staff report, so you could strike that out on page 112. It's a conventional zoning request. It's inconsistent with the 2000 land use plan, 2006 land use plan, because it's not consistent with the policies that I previously addressed, including the housing and neighborhood policies, HN1, 3, and 9, and commercial development policies 1 through 5, 6, and 8. And it's not reasonable in the public interest because it does not provide for properly planned mixed-use development adjacent to Carritoque Highway. Any, any questions for me on this?
Anybody have any questions? We're good. Thank you. All right. Is there... There's no other presentation. That, that was, that was great, Ms. Turner. All right. Open the floor for a public comment? Yeah?
The applicant has a representative?
I'm sorry. Come on up. I skipped right over you, didn't I?
That's all right. I'm back to the line.
Yeah. You didn't make enough noise back there. I wasn't used to that.
Jason Mazel with the Timmons Group in Elizabeth City, here on behalf of Main State Construction, who's the applicant. We'll start off by, by kind of sharing with you how they got to the decision to, to apply for the rezoning they have, they have. One of the important elements of keeping general business on this was that there is some interest. They do have someone interested in at least one potential out parcel, but at 6.6 acres, even if you divide it into two parcels, three acres is kind of large when you look at what might want to go in that, that area of Grandy. As staffs pointed out, it's not a lighted intersection, so you're not looking to attract someone that's going to be putting in a medium box type of, type of structure, nor the kind of traffic count that, that a lighted intersection would, would retain. So they looked at, okay, we still have interest in general business, but we don't need something quite that large. That's why we looked at moving the line forward. What to do with the rest of the property? If you left it the 6.6 acres and only have a little bit of Ag, as staffs point out, there's not a whole lot of, of ability to develop that for residential. The applicant's desire is, is residential on that back piece, but one of the things that they also know is, it's Grandy. It's not Moyoc. It doesn't have the drive for the residential sales like the Moyoc area does. So there's no crystal ball to say that they get approved for rezoning for, say, a conditional zoning on, on a strict residential that, that would, that would fly, that they'd be able to demarcate that and sell it. It may be better suited to, say, a doctor's office or something like that. So they wanted to keep the flexibility that was allowed by going with the, with the straight zoning, knowing that things like multifamily are a set conditional zoning, so we're not looking at doing anything like that. They looked at cottage courts. One of the desires is to provide some modest housing. That was actually one of the key comments we got from the operator of the Carolina Club, Keith Hall, when he called to inquire about the, what was going on with the property, is, are you going to have houses, or are they going to be modest or, or be able to provide his employees with something? Because there's a real need for housing of that nature in that part of, in part of Carritoque. So trying to find the best fit between the two. MXR is more of a transition zoning between commercial and less dense residential. When you look at what the, what the primary commercial communities are in, in Carritoque, you've got Moyoc, you've got the Barco Coinjock area, you've got Grandy, and you've got Pous Point. Of those four, three of them have MXR zoning in that, in those core areas. The only one that doesn't is Grandy. Maybe just no one's ever come forward to, to ask for that request. As far as it being budding agriculture, if you look at all of the other MXR zones in the county, nearly all of them are between general business and agriculture zones. So I don't think there's very many unless there's some of the conditional ones in Moyoc that actually back up to, say, an SFM zone. So from a compatibility standpoint, it's still fitting in that model that's already established in those three other core community areas. So at the, at the end of the day, staff and I, Jenny and I have, have had some good conversation about whether it's better to seek a conditional zoning or to go forward with a straight zoning. The client's desire is to keep some flexibility. If the conditional zoning was such that where it had a little more flexibility to it, I think that would be more palpable. But there's a lot of restrictions that go along with that conditional zoning that, as you've seen with a couple of the other ones, any changes, you're coming right back through this process again. And as we know, there's, there's things on the books that are being looked at for stormwater regulations that could greatly impact a design right now. The other thing is, applicant doesn't own the property. It's under contract, so this is a part of his due diligence, if you will, to see if this is something that's ultimately going to work for him. That's kind of the general, general nutshell, if you will, of, of how we got to this point. We really wanted to still get in front of you guys, get some discussion, get some feedback, and, and see what, see what this board's recommendation would be, and then make decisions from there whether we stick with this or, or we back up and punt. I think the applicant would like to move forward with this request, but we're certainly open to, to listening what, what you guys as a recommended board have to say.
All right.
I'll answer any questions anybody's got.
All right. Well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mazel? No, not right at the moment, I don't think. We might add a few though.
Yeah. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. I'll open the floor for a public comment if there's any- I'll open the floor for a public comment, if there's anybody else here that wishes to speak on this particular topic. All right, don't see anybody. Moving along. Any questions or discussion amongst the board? I'll, I'll say that I'm fairly familiar with the Grandy area, I live just south of Grandy, and I, I think it's, it needs, you know, some development would be welcomed in that
But this, this request does not eliminate, eliminate the ability to develop the property. I mean, what Jenny said is a conditional use, they can come forward with something a little more specific and designed a particular way.
Right, with a conditional zoning request, they could have a conceptual development plan that lays out certain features.
Little more hoops to jump through, but it's, it's more specific.
Right, they could set maximum density, lot sizes, they could set certain reg, uh, uses that, that would or would not be allowed on the property. But, you know, to Jason's point, there isn't a, a lot of flexibility within that, but I think there's some, just depends on how you draw the plan. It doesn't have to be a, a detailed site plan necessarily, but you do have to identify areas where certain development would be, development footprints, access and things like that.
The other thing that I'll add is that any development, this is just a zone, so any development that we're to come forward in the general business or the MXR, still has to come back through the, the tech review process. If it's a subdivision, it still has to come back through preliminary plan, that will not, or if you get approved. The zoning isn't necessarily, if you're going to go see, see somebody from Keratoke, this is the ability to proceed to that next step.
Okay. And explain to me, and I should have asked you, Jenny, is spot zoning again? What, what is that? Explain the concept of spot, I think I've got a pretty good idea of what it means, but, because it's, it's not legal, right?
It can be illegal, it can be illegal if you, but if, in order for it to be legal, you have to make, uh, these five findings have to be valid in order for the, the rezoning to be held as a legal rezoning and not an illegal spot zoning, so. And on page 111 of your packet, the, the five factors are, are spelled out individually. Sorry, there's an extra bullet in there.
That's all right.
So, number of owners, size of the tract, compatibility with the adopted county plans, balance of benefits and detriments, and relationship of uses. I mean, staff has, has laid out some concerns. It may be possible for this board to address those concerns through, through a motion. But considering there's no MXR in that immediate area, and it's Ag to GB, it just, it seems like, especially the density, is, is a, is a big difference.
And the MXR would allow for 15 units? Is that?
On a, on a, on a math ba, yeah, on a, on a straight calculation basis, up to 15 on 7.57 acres.
On that, on that acre?
On that back parcel.
But there's no wastewater there, so.
Right, so they'd have to design it to meet all those requirements, but they haven't done that yet because they're just at rezoning phase.
The minimum lot size is for single-family residential is 15,000 square feet. When you consider that you have septic on there, and you consider that you have to have stormwater retention on there.
You've got to get a road back there, too, don't you?
Yeah, get a road in there.
Yeah.
The likelihood of it meeting a, a two-unit or three-acre density is, is pretty unlikely. You know, while a will share is, the minimum lot size, and I know it's a conservation subdivision, but the chronicle of the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. So, from perspective of lot size and looking at values, the, the lot size is going to be fairly compatible if single-family works in Keratoke. I think just based on the septic requirements alone, you'd probably be closer to 20,000 anyway. It's sanier than Moayak, but it's, it's not beach sand, so.
Compared to Grandy area and rezonings, the way they occur on the northern end of the county, it's, it's been a long time since there's been a lot of rezonings that have happened in the Grandy area. I feel like MXR is a fairly newer type zoning that maybe wasn't around as an option a long time ago when a lot of these things were actually zoned what they are today that surround it, so.
Yeah, transition, it was a, a tran, some existing zoning districts transitioned to MXR with the adoption of the new ordinance in 2013. Can we still call it new? 2013? So, there's a, there's a translation table in there. The prior zoning district was mixed residential, and some of those lands were re-designated into Ag and some of them into SFR, single-family residential, and some went to mixed residential.
Right next to it, now I see that, that owner, have they made comment?
Which direction?
Which, the Beacon Seafood side?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's the Grandys, uh, which they're...
Would you mind stepping back up here just so we get your stuff on record?
Yep. So, the parcels in the south is Tommy Grandy, Tommy Sheila Grandy, which their sister is Phyllis, who owns this parcel, so. And talking some with Mr. Grandy, we talked a little bit about potential for the, for both properties. He's not interested in doing anything with his, in fact, he's even commented that if it went forward with a single family, he'd really like to not see a connection to his property, but again, that's a design element. He's got his little seafood market out front, I think he likes just kind of having that where it is, and then the market obviously up to the north, so they really don't have any strong desires to develop their property, unfortunately. But it was something that was talked about back in the fall as to whether that would be available to include with this. We were initially looking at cottage court, but that requires a 10-acre minimum size to do cottage courts on, regardless of the number of units you're going to put in there, and that would have taken away the general business option up front. That's still a strong desire to, to have there, so.
What did you say, cottage courts?
Cottage courts.
Cottage courts.
Oh, cottage courts, I'm sorry.
The math, I'm mumble enough as it is, the math makes it worse. But yeah, yeah, cottage courts was something that was done down at Kamalik. We looked at that as kind of a prototype, but even with that, they had to offset some of their required acreage into the golf course. It's only sitting on about five acres, they offset the other five inside of the course. So, again, this isn't single ownership between the golf course and here, so it, it really lends us the property as to what you could do there. But that was a housing type that was looked at as being somewhat in that, that modest value that could be, could be sold in this area.
I mean, it, it looks to me like you, you keep talking about residential.
Yeah.
Is, is that what they want to do?
That's what he wants to do, but again, he doesn't have the property in ownership, and it's one of those things where he has some suitors for the general business, and depending on how that goes.
He wants to keep all his options.
Right, exactly, because if he sells one of those and then the next day, oh, I hear that's coming in, we'd like to build a doctor's office, you know. Keeping all options on the floor, I've, I've used this term loosely, but it's, this the hit-by-bust scenario. It gets it rezoned for single-family residential, something happens and they can't develop it, so now they're looking at a piece of property that only has one option. So, it really restricts the ability to do something else with the property should that become a, a, not a viable option for the property owner. Thank you.
No, thank you. Any, any other questions? All right. Hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion. I'll make a motion on this, and I'll motion to approve PB 2102 because the request is consistent with the land use plan, full-service designation. And I believe the general business zoning opens up an opportunity for the same, what is it, small commercial developments that we're just now talking about in the Baxter Lane corner, and the middle-class, blue-collar housing is a strong need in the Grandy area, some nice square building lots, and that'll be my motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Appose?
Aye.
Nay.
Juanito. It was, it was Shay and Juanito were for.
Gary, were you, nay?
Nay.
All right, well, motion fails, three to two. Any other motions? Anyone else that can make a different motion? We probably need to either pass deny, table the item in some way, rather than just leave it in the limbo. Not really, since you really can't add conditions or anything, so I'm not sure really what, what to do.
Right, because it was a string.
But I do know we probably need to handle the item in some sort of way.
The motion to approve fails, so to be cleaner, yes, if there was a motion to deny, but that's, and you have the majority vote, that would be cleaner, but you also have the motion to approve has failed, so it doesn't move on as a recommendation?
I would prefer it if somebody would make a motion for something that, that would pass.
I'm sorry, that would what?
The motion would pass if you made a motion to deny it or a motion to table it or something.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to, for denial. I move to deny PB 2102 because the request is inconsistent with the 2000 land use plan policies, including housing and neighborhood policies, HN 1, HN 3, and HN 9, and commercial development policies, CD 1 through 5, CD 6, and CD 8. It is not reasonable and not in the public interest because it does, does not provide for properly planned mixed-use development adjacent to Keratoke Highway.
All right, we have a motion?
I'll second.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm going to vote no on that. Motion passes. All right. Onto the next item. Agenda item PB 20-16, Keratoke County Tax Amendment Utility and Drainage Easements. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Section 623 and 734, to prohibit onsite wastewater systems in utility and drainage maintenance access easements on individual lots, and to clarify that maintenance access drainage easements must be dedicated to the county. All right, Ms. Turner?
Yes, sir.
You, you again.
That's me. Okay. Can I, can I get a green light?
Forget it.
Thanks. All right. Get to the right page of the packet here. We're on page 128 of the packet. So, this is a tax amendment initiated by the county. In the staff report, there's some, some background in the staff report regarding the reason for this tax amendment. The purpose is to revise the ordinance to prohibit placement of onsite septic systems in drainage and utility easements. A little bit of background, this has been, on occasion, there has been individual lots where septic systems were placed on the individual lot in these drainage easements, and staff is concerned about the purpose for these easements and potentially damaging those very important components of a septic system within those utility and maintenance access drainage easements. So, that's kind of the purpose and background for prohibiting septic systems on individual lots in those easements. And the second part is to clarify that the required easements for drainage shall be dedicated to the county. The ordinance specified that easements needed to be shown on waterway conveyance systems, and we wanted to specify that the easement needs to be dedicated to the county. And the reason is, is the county wants to have access to those features so we can perform work associated with an existing stormwater drainage district, and to start obtaining the, the right to access those drainage ways for future stormwater drainage districts. So, here's the, the language from the ordinance, Section 6.2.3, and that's on page 130, because you probably definitely can't see that, David, if you didn't see the other side. I think it's a little smaller.
I'm going to have to get glasses, or we're going to have to get a bigger screen.
Are we getting a bigger screen?
Well, we're going to try it.
All right. Oh, yeah, that's right, a whole screen, yeah, so we're going high-tech soon. So, we're proposing to add under the utility easements section of the ordinance that this prohibition for onsite wastewater systems are prohibited in all utility easements on an individual lot. So, that's pretty specific where we mean that you can't put your septic system there. Onto Section 7.3.4, we're going to add language that the drainage easements and point, that the development should provide maintenance access drainage easements and point of entry to the county in accordance with the following standards, that the easements shall be, be provided along at least one side of a waterway conveyance system that drains more than five acres. This is what we talked about a little bit in the work session, this, this underlying language, provided it's not part of a state-permitted and functional stormwater management system. We probably just need to, to leave that as it was, and the, the main change here being intend that it's to the county, easement and point of entry to the county. I'm kind of making that statement and looking for a little bit of a concurrence here on that.
Yeah, I think that, if you remove that, then it allows more access than less access, and that's probably better in case something ever goes wrong.
Because it could, right. Thank you. All right. All right. And then, again, just in the, so there's, the first part was about utility easements, this part is about maintenance access drainage easements, so we're gonna add the same language about prohibiting onsite wastewater systems and maintenance access drainage easements. And before, earlier today, I didn't envision this being nine o'clock, so I made, I made this map, and thought you guys might like to see what we're talking about with the maintenance. And I didn't realize that you wouldn't be able to see it at all, so.
We can see it.
You just humor me. Yeah, so you can see, all the blue are the, are some of the mapped drainage waterway systems, and they're labeled, so you can see here, you know, Giddy Mill Canal, lateral A, B, C, somewhere in there, Rolling Creek, Tolls Creek. So, so these are some of those major, and not too major ditches in the northern part of the county. This was just in case you wanted to see a visual of what these easements look like on a plat, and where your septic, where we're saying your septic, should it go. So you can see here, they're showing a 25-foot rear yard setback, that's not it, there's this 10-foot drainage and utility easement in the rear, and on the sides, and then here in the front, it's 15, and a 20-foot front setback. Any questions on that one? Can y'all see that one?
We can.
Okay, good. And then here, I just wanted to show you what a drainage easement on a plat kinda looks like. So, and what I didn't do was, you know the name of this one? Mark might know. It's Windspout Pines. But, but the ditch, we know what the ditch is called? Yeah, 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 let's do that, let's do it. It may not even be on there, because only, like, certain ones, it was like a word cloud, certain ones jumped out. What's that? Mm-hmm, yeah, so anyway, there, there, you can see that they're showing drainage easement 25 feet from the top of the bank of the boundary ditch, and you can see that that easement is coming onto Lot 4 here, and Lot 5. And so, we just wanna make sure you're taking heavy equipment in here to, to maintain the ditch, that we're not impacting negatively a very important part of the infrastructure of your, your lot and house. All right. Good on that? Okay. There's text amendment review standards in the ordinance, a lot of them are similar to some of the ones we talked about with the zoning map amendments. So, they're there, I'm not gonna read all those. So staff does recommend approval of the request as submitted. The text amendment's consistent with the 2006 land use plan, water quality policy number six regarding vegetated, preserving vegetated buffers, water quality policy number eight regarding the county having a comprehensive drainage and flood management plan, water and sewer policy six that says, you know, you can still have approved septic systems, we're not changing that, and housing and neighborhood policy number eight, that the county will continue to enforce appropriate construction and site development standards for residential developments. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it clarifies that those maintenance access drainage easements shall be dedicated to the county to ensure access, and it prohibits placement of onsite wastewater systems in utility and drainage easements to protect individual site improvements from potential damage. And staff does recommend approval with that one section there that's underlined to not be carried forward. Any questions?
How are they gonna convey? I mean, are they gonna convey when, like?
The easements, you think?
Yeah.
So when a development application comes in, this section of the ordinance applies, so generally it's gonna be new subdivisions.
Oh, new.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I think so.
As the county takes on potentially a more proactive approach to stormwater and ditch maintenance, potentially, this will put easements in place so that, you know, we can go in on these major drainage features without worrying about, to provide us access, but also not worrying about busting up somebody's septic, the, the lines for their septic tank.
Access is one of several factors that impact our ability to do drainage work, so it's important. We are not responsible for, for drainage, no.
If the county has access, they could loan that access to a construction company that's going out there.
You know, it's, most of this.
Really just being proactive.
Yes, yeah.
The fact is, is our, if moving off especially grows, it's gonna be something.
Yeah, I think it's a huge, important factor, I think it's a wonderful thing, that the maintenance of ditches gets overlooked, and number one contributing factor, I'm sure, to the flooding. Whenever, wherever it occurs.
Now, does this just, this doesn't, easements, does that apply to anything else that's being brought into the county that's not residential, let's say? Is it only residential that you're looking at? Well.
I'd have to look that up.
Well, they has to have onsite wastewater systems. That's in the motion, so something that doesn't have an onsite wastewater system wouldn't, it wouldn't, would be a different animal, right?
Well, the easements are required when you come in with development applications, so to answer your question, depends on what the development application is, and whether it's subject to that, that provision of the ordinance.
Stormwater.
Yeah, so.
So if they're along any of these ditch lines, there's a potential, even if it's not residential, septic system, well, I think it's.
Yeah. And then furthermore, it's just simply saying, don't put your drain field in the easement.
Right.
Because we take a drive over, or we don't.
Right. Might mash some lines down. All right.
I mean, to answer your question, it appears that there is the potential that easements would be required on other development projects that aren't subdivisions. And that's just a quick glance at that section of the ordinance.
And just like the gentleman said earlier, if there's a ditch there, somebody's gonna wanna maintain it.
Well, what happens is sometimes, as this property is conveyed from a farmer who's been maintaining it, to not necessarily, it doesn't have to be, there's a lot of lateral, like, for the Moyack, the Moyack solar farm. There's several, you know.
Lateral.
Yeah, several ditches that run along that, which easements would be helpful for everyone. I like it.
All right. Any questions for staff, or for anybody else? Nope? All right, now I'm not confused this time, that was the presentation.
That was my presentation. Mr. Bissel had submitted some slides, I don't know if he's planning to.
All right. Mr. Bissel, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Karen, I'd like to leave a few comments.
Sure.
And let me say that I'm not opposed to this amendment, per se. I started looking at it to see if there are any unintended consequences, and just kinda studying it. As you know, on that, on that amendment that was adopted a year or so ago, that said you couldn't have any more lots running on highways, and that did have unintended consequences, which could get fixed last week with a new text amendment. And so I was looking at this to see other unintended consequences, and so, so where do you have easements? And the UDO says that you need to have an easement around all of your lot lines, but there are exceptions in the UDO that allow, for example, a, an easement across the rear property line to be waived under, in certain circumstances. And these are a couple of those kinds of circumstances. On the left, you'll see a situation where you have a conservation subdivision, which allows your repair area to be in open space. And a lot of times, you'll have a situation where you'll have then a pond behind that, and your lot line soils are draining to the pond. And so you really wouldn't need an easement to be on the rear property line. And the UDO, as I said, has the ability for the planning director to waive that requirement in certain cases. Or you have a drainage ditch that runs through, and the, the example on the right, you have your collector soil actually running through an open space with your lot line soils connected to it, so in that case, you don't need an easement along the rear property line, because your, your drainage and your maintenance requirements are all in open space. And so, and the UDO does address that for some situations. So it allows alternate locations as part of the planned development, or a conservation subdivision, or a zero lot line development, but that same situation occurs pretty, you have almost an identical situation potentially in MXR development, but that is excluded from the language that's covered by the discretionary authority that's given to the planning director. So my suggestion is that, you know, we look at all the cases where, where these exceptions would be appropriate, and add, at least MXR, I haven't looked at this very much, to see if maybe there are other cases too, but MXR is the one that jumped out, is potentially problematic. If, if the planning director doesn't have the authority to waive that easement in an MXR development, then you can't do either one of these things.
Does the utility easement have to be around every lot line, or just a lot line that's on a ditch?
Well, you have, the UDO has written that you have a 15-foot easement in the front, and 10-foot easements on the side and rear property lines, unless they're waived. And I, and I don't know really what the purpose of the utility easement would be on the rear property line, but I think that can be waived as well. It's mainly drainage that's a concern. And the same thing, you know, here, this gives the, the, except for conservation, subdivisions, or other developments employing a cluster or decentralized waste letter system, all onsite wastewater system improvements and requirements should be located on the individual lot. And yet, you know, an MXR development is similar to a conservation subdivision in that it can have repaired areas that are behind an open space. So again, I'd like to add MXR to that exception, and same thing here with regard to, these appear to be duplication, duplicates.
Are you? Yeah, the comment, what they are in the second one.
They're, one of them is intended to address utility easements, and the other one drainage easements.
Right. So you would like to add MXR in?
We'd like to add MXR to the exceptions.
Three different?
Where, that, where all of your active and repair area does not necessarily be on the property line. And that, then, would tie back to this, you know, allowing alternative easement locations.
Because you saw in the last one, you saw issues with a repair area, correct? Like if, I know in my subdivision, if I start having a, a failure with my septic tank, I have an easement area that the homeowners association owns, right adjacent to the sidewalk. But I'm, have been told, I'm able to go into that easement and put a drain line in.
If you're in a conservation subdivision, then yes, you can.
Yeah, I hope I am. But that's what I've been told, is that if, if I do have issues and I need a repair area, I can go into that easement area. So.
So right now, if you're in a conservation subdivision, or a PDR, or, or some kind of planned development, or some kind of, and there was one other case, a zero lot line development, you can do that. But if you're in an MXR, you can't do that, but I think you should be able to do that, because it's, your, your design is very similar to a conservation subdivision, maybe that's what it is.
Have you discussed this with staff?
Uh, no, we, we didn't realize that this was in the works, and. So we're, so we're basically reacting, we're reacting.
If I could just, not to interrupt, but I, I think that this may be something that, that can be changed, but I don't believe that it was part of the text amendment that was before you, and probably needs to be done in a separate text amendment, and we can determine probably whether that, that would be a staff, or a county-initiated one, or, or otherwise.
Or if you are concerned about unintended consequences, like Mr. Bissel's saying, you can table this, and we can confer back with the applicant and the county engineer, and see if this is something that we want to address in.
Would that be preferable to you?
Um, I would prefer that, other than making either approving it, making a recommendation for approval, without Mr. Bissel's input, or with, with his input, just straight as it sits.
Would you be all right with that, Mr. Bissel?
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to, to try to amend it before it's adopted.
Give, give it some time for y'all to discuss it? Before we move forward?
Can, can I just ask, are there, are there applications coming in where we need to get the clarification of the easements to the county in the meantime? Is this something that's pressing, or?
In the grand scheme of things, as, as the applicant, I don't think that one or two projects that come in is gonna make or break the access that we might miss out on over a month.
Okay.
We've already got years of, of access, so.
Okay.
And the projects that are coming forward, or the project that is coming forward right now, has got the Rolling Creek Canal, which they're addressing there, but not, at this point, they, we wouldn't retroactively make them do the easements.
I, I think it's a really great idea, what you certainly should bring up, that like point.
And I wasn't gonna bring this up, because I actually liked it the way it was written, better than the way it's now being proposed to be changed, and let me just talk about that a little bit, this 25-foot easement, and how prevalent that can actually be, because five acres isn't a very big drainage area, so essentially you have five lots that are draining into a ditch, and the sixth one is gonna have a 25-foot easement on it, in order to maintain that ditch. And so that 25 feet is going to impact where that sixth lot can put its septic system, and it could be a significant impact, so.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Bissel while he's up here? All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody here to speak on this? Okay. Any, any further questions, discussion? Open the floor for a motion.
I'm going to move to table PB 2016 in view of the fact that we need to get some clarification on some of the wording for this text amendment and any unforeseen consequences that may occur.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Which one, which one of you wants to take it? All right. Juanita, we have a second.
Juanita.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion passes. We'll come back to that one. All right. This is the last one. Agenda item PB 21-01, Currituck County Multi-Family Townhouse Stormwater Text Amendment. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 7, Environmental Protection, Section 34B2, to exempt Type 1 subdivisions from multifamily townhouse developments from the stormwater detention requirement for a 24-hour event with a two-year recurrence interval based on pre-development conditions from a wooded site. Bissell Cicero.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I said during the work session, this was an inconsistency that staff was directed by the county manager and the board of commissioners to address. The way our ordinance is written now, a, a multifamily development, if you, if it's going to stay on one parcel, so you're not going to go in and subdivide, but it's all going to be on, stay on one parcel, it has to meet one standard for stormwater retention. It has to meet that handle a five-year 24-hour rain event. Now, if an app, if a, if a developer is going to come in then and put lot lines on, on that development, let's say create, and specifically townhomes or the, the one multifamily project that we allow to be subdivided, but if a developer was going to come in and then create individual lots on those townhomes, then they would have to meet the subdivision regulations as far as stormwater retention. And so that is, that would be the, the 10-year, the 10-year 24-hour rain event. And so before you, up on the screen or in, even in the, let's see, packet page 140, the actual text says, "For stormwater management standard under stormwater detention requirements, major subdivisions," and this is the new language, "with the exception of a Type 1 subdivision of multifamily townhouse developments, subject to these standards shall implement adequate stormwater practices to reduce the post-development peak discharge from 24-hour storm event with a 10-year recurrence interval down to the pre-development discharge from the 24-hour storm event with two-year recurrence interval based on pre-development wooded site." So because they're eliminating the requirement that a multifamily development that's going to be subdivided, a Type 1, so 20 lots or less, is going to be subdivided, does not have to meet the subdivision standards for stormwater retention, it would be, then be kicked into all other, the all other development, which would be the 10, the five-year, the five-year storm in a 24-hour, the five-year interval. So it's essentially reducing the standards for multifamily Type 1, 20 lots or less, Type 1 townhouse development that's going to be subdivided. So, and the text amendment is consistent with the 2006 land use plan with policy HN8, "to protect the county's tax base and ensure the long-term viability of the county's neighborhoods and housing stock, the county will continue to enforce appropriate construction and site development standards for residential development." Policy WQ4, "Runoff and drainage from development, forestry and agricultural activities shall be of quality and quantity as near natural conditions as possible. Post-development runoff shall not exceed pre-development volumes." And the request is reasonable in the public interest because it provides flexibility for the design of multifamily townhouse development. So this is a little bit technical. I know we're getting down in the weeds, two months in a row, we're getting down in the weeds with what our stormwater requirements are. So basically, we're saying, and when I looked this up the other day, we were talking about, or in our, at last month, we were talking about the different types of storms. And, but when I looked this, this difference up in, on the NOAA website where we go for this type of information, in the Moyoc area, it's basically about an inch difference between the storm. So the five-year storm in a 24-hour period is like five and a half or so inches in a 24-hour period. And a 10-year storm is probably a little over six inches. So there's about an inch difference, which could significantly impact a, a project and the amount of rain they have to retain. So the applicant is here, if you would have any questions for him.
Come on up.
Laurie covered it really well. The basic gist of it is because of lines on a map, a subdivision, a multifamily subdivision gets kicked into this higher standard. It, it doesn't generate any more impervious area with, with there's lines on the map. The reason we capped it, and I felt comfortable saying that it was 20 lots or less, I think we already have that delineation point in the ordinance. And so therefore, 20 lots or less is going to be a smaller project. If you, if you let it be any multifamily, in theory, you could have, you know, a thousand lot, thousand unit lot that, that could have a lesser stormwater impact. But in this case, it's a small project. And then I just had an issue personally with the inconsistency that the lines on the map throw it into a different standard when, I mean, there's, there's no more impervious. I will say that in conversations I've had with, with Laurie, one of her concerns is, you know, if it's, if it's subdivided, then all of a sudden HOAs are now responsible versus if it's on one parcel, it's typically a property management company. What I would say to that is, you know, we, we can see from some examples in Moyoc with sewage that just because a property developer has the control of it, doesn't mean it's, some kind of infrastructure is managed any better than if the HOA has control of it. So.
Right.
I feel like the impact would be minor and it, it allows for more flexibility to, plus if any smaller multifamily developments come in, and one of the things that we've heard is there's some desire for multifamily, not a ton, but this is an impediment that doesn't really need to be there.
All right. Anybody have any questions? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for anybody? Anybody here to speak on it? Anybody else? None of the engineers have anything? All right. Close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion amongst the board? Hearing non, open the floor for a motion.
I'm going to move to approve PB 21-01 because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policy of the land use plan, including policy HN8, "to protect the county's tax base and to ensure the long-term viability of the county's neighborhoods and housing stock, the county will continue to enforce appropriate construction and site development standards for residential developments. Such standards may include, for example, that all homes have a permanent masonry foundation except where flood levels require elevation, and a pitched roof and overhang, and that local roads must be built to meet NC DOT acceptance standards. See transportation policies for details concerning requirements for paved roads." Also, policy WQ4, "runoff and drainage from development, forestry and agricultural activities shall be of quality and quantity as near to natural conditions as possible. Post-development runoff shall not exceed pre-development volumes." And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it is consistent with the policies within the land use plan. It provides flexibility for the design for multifamily development subdivisions.
All right. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Uh, we don't have any more items. Is there any announcements? Just that everybody's ready to go, huh?
Uh, really quickly, the land use plan, Imagine Currituck, we have, are on the clock, I guess, and probably over the next couple of months, we'll be getting that out to you and for your review and then bringing it forward for your, your recommendation.
Oh, okay. All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. At this time, I'll open the floor for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion? Second? We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Meeting is adjourned.